United States of America, and Republic of France, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we apologize for being a little bit late. We did have another posted meeting at four, so we were right in here. So we've actually been here. Also, I'm sure you guys can all see the new technology that we have sitting in front of us, thanks to the high school here. We will be using the laptops. These are the students' laptops.
Actually, from the middle school.
The middle school students' laptops. We're trying to go paperless in an effort to save the paper that comes in giant stacks to our homes, and also save the time that it takes to have those either delivered and/or picked up by keeping all of our, as much of our information as we can, paperless, to try to save down on the costs expended, because it does get quite costly for us as well, making all of these copies. So, these were not purchased for the school committee. I do want to make that very clear. These were set up by the schools for our use. So, thank you to the technology department for setting all this up for us. So, bear with us a little bit today, because it'll be a little bit bizarre, I think, initially, but, oh man. Are there any comments and/or statements from the public before we get started? Okay. Seeing none. Onto the informational agenda. Ann Harkin. Go ahead. Sorry?
Last meeting, Mrs. Sullivan asked for information on the enrollment. So, provided in your packet, enrollment as by grade, by school, as of September 2012. Special education in district students, and it comes to 234 on that day, but it changes, it can change daily with the kids moving in and out. And just note that in the high school self-contained class, there are two students over the age of 18 in that class, just for your information. Any questions about that?
From the eight, and, two of those eight over 18.
Yeah. And what will be happening, you know, over time, as kids come up from the middle school, is that that age will be collected, will be collected, but more and more students will be coming in. We'll have, eventually have to have a class that is an older student group, I think.
And by law, we have to, these kids are allowed to stay till?
Twenty-two.
Till twenty-two.
And on the second page, if you have it by pages.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, that just describes the last three years of out-of-district placements and what we have currently this year. So, if you want to look at the, just the totals, you can see how the substantially separate classrooms have remained about the same. The collaborative placements have been reduced in that one collaborative student. We have, actually, he's one of those students that I spoke about last week, who is DCF custody student. So, he's been placed and we are required to pay. And private day, that's remained about the same, but there's been a lot of comings and goings on the private day front. And residential, you can see that we've reduced that considerably over time. But see, but you have to really understand that you, from one day to the next, you really never know. The phone call you're gonna, you're gonna get, or student may be in foster care, doesn't work out, ends up in a residential placement, family's from Westport, then we're responsible for that educational piece.
So, 2009, 2010, we had five in residential.
Right.
And 2012, 2013, only two.
Two.
Correct. That's as we're entering. We do have a student that we haven't yet resolved the residency, but I'm being told that the parent has moved into Westport DCF custody, and we would be responsible for that. But they're, they're illegal, we're not getting the information to establish residency, so.
So, that's not included in that number?
That's not included in that.
So, if they're moving in, we should have a half a year leeway, though, correct, isn't it? The last district pays half and we pay the other half?
Well, the student moved in. The parent, I'm being told the parent moved in last March, which would mean.
We have a whole year.
That we have a full year. But I, we haven't been able to get any information established in residency.
Okay.
So, I'm not quite even sure how that goes, because it's been months and months and the, and the parent hasn't been able to come up with it. And now, today, I was just told that they can't show a lease, because the landlord is out of the country. So, I'm not sure. So, I'm just saying that, you know, I can't count it him. I'm not gonna, we can't be providing services, but that when it gets resolved, if she indeed is living in Westport and can substantiate that, then our responsibility would be back to July. So, we have to be aware of that.
The bigger issue was not so much whether the parents living here, although that has now become the issue. The issue was, usually, we're supposed to be notified by April 1st, because that's kind of the cutoff date. If the child moves into the district after July, after April 1st, it is the responsibility of the previous district for one more year to maintain that student wherever they are in placement. We did not find out till August. That was our first concern, although legally, apparently, other than probably initiating some kind of a lawsuit against the other district for not notifying us so we could put it in our budget, there's not much else we can do, because the state is willing to say, "Too bad, they didn't tell you. Still your student."
And for whatever reason, which I don't understand all the ins and outs of DCF, but I think it could be resolved if they would appoint a guardian to this student. But he has nobody. He has someone to sign his educational program, but he has no guardian. So, this, DCF is limited to trying to get the parent to come in, and now they just, they're, they're asking me what to do.
Are there any other questions on this part?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The arrow on the top. Onto the transportation update. She's smiling today.
I was smiling less, honey.
True.
Transportation always smiles.
Just an update. Well, since the last time we were here, two weeks ago, transportation is probably about, no, she was a week ago, wasn't it?
Week.
Week. We're about 95% completed with having everything up and running the way it needs to be running and, you know, smoothed out. We probably have about another 3%, 4% that I still have a few situations that I'm trying to take care of still at this point, and using the school resource officer to help with some safety concerns and some areas that are still questionable, and deciding whether or not, with time and number of students on buses, if we can still make some adjustments. So, we're still working on that. Next week, I plan to do some ridership counts to see how many students are actually riding, to try to clean up the routes a little more again, to find out from the drivers how many students are riding, against the students that are not riding. We're hoping to implement the bus passes next Monday, so that students stop utilizing the bus passes. So, that again will cause a little bit of delay, and some parents do kind of get a little upset when their students have left their bus passes at home. So, we will do a one-call to remind parents. Today already, we had the middle school and the high school make general announcements to the students, reminding them that bus passes will take effect, go into effect next Monday. If they don't have their bus passes, they have up until Friday to get them. We'll do a one-call probably tomorrow night to let parents know ahead of time that Monday we will start enforcing the bus passes. So, if your student does not have one, they still have a chance to get them by Friday. So, that's something that, you know, will be happening soon. Usually, it starts about the week after school begins, but with all the changes and a lot of people coming in and paying late, we've done some changes with that. We're ready to start reimbursing any of the families that did qualify for free and reduce, that had paid for either a reduced rate or a full-price rate for transportation. So, we'll be starting to record, to put those through by Friday. We have all the free and reduced put through, so now we'll start to do that, so that those parents, those families can get reimbursed for, you know, paying for their bus fees. Loops, we'll start to get a little more handle on the loops. And when I say loops, what happens is we have two groups of buses. We have the first group that'll come in, and, you know, there could be like nine buses that are always the earlier buses, so they become part of loop one, and that happens in all the schools. So, it helps just the schools and the secretaries and principals and everything kind of get ready of knowing that the first loop is these nine buses. Second loop are these nine buses, so that they kind of move in quicker and are able to get the kids in and out, you know, just in a more old-timely fashion. We don't have buses coming in late like we did the first two weeks. We had some buses that were overloaded. We've made some changes, which has helped with to change the bus loads to more where they need to be or lower. So, therefore, the buses are coming in more in a timely fashion. So, none of the kids are coming in late like they were. We had a couple of buses that were always showing up late, and so by the time they make it to the MAC number school for the Wes and MAC runs, the buses were not getting there till like quarter of nine, 10 of nine. So, that's all smoothed out. We're settled with that right now. Timing seems to be good. One of the concerns that I do have is just the traffic, traffic that's going to be on Old County Road. I live right on Old County Road, so in the morning, I'm watching usually from like 7:15 till about 7:23, the traffic really builds up there. My main concern is when the winter comes, is that cars are gonna start having trouble getting stuck on that hill, backing down that hill, if we get some icy days. Buses will start to get stuck on that hill with the icy days, because they are literally stopped. They're stopped there for a good 12 minutes. It's only about 12 minutes of the morning, but the buses are, buses, traffic, parents, families, I mean, it's from the middle school all the way up to the lights that there's a line of traffic for about 12 minutes every morning.
I'm making that pass every day, from the middle school to the high school. And I actually said to you the other day, I waited 10 minutes, and he was like, "Are you kidding me?" And my concern is the same thing. I noticed on the rainy, there was one rainy day, I waited longer.
Right.
So, there was definitely more people that were bringing, rightfully so. I wonder if, and I, you know, as I was sitting there this morning, waiting for those, you know, because I was backed up actually all the way to past where your street is.
Right.
Past that, which is pretty far, almost at the middle school.
Yeah, it's about half a mile, three-quarters of a mile.
Is there a way that, I mean, I don't know if the, maybe this is something the board of selectmen, I don't know, the traffic, the light at that stop, at certain times, maybe it runs longer, because that's the problem. It's the problem.
Right, it's only letting.
Of getting through that light, because you're only getting two, three cars through.
Yeah.
Or maybe putting more clear turn in this lane, straight in this lane, I don't know. Because you've got people that need to turn right, but can't turn right, so they're stuck there, too.
Right.
So, maybe something with the board of selectmen can, you know, but I know I was there.
Yes. That's my concern, and not just for the buses, but for everybody. Plus, it's gonna start to delay the buses, where right now, I believe, I've checked in with all the principals over the last day, just asking everyone and secretaries, you know, "How's the timing been? Do you have any students coming in late? Dismissal," you know, dismissal is still running late, but I don't see that changing, because even though the timing originally was scheduled that they got out at 2:55 at the elementary school and then 3:00 at the MAC, I believe the buses still aren't getting to the MAC till like 3:10, 3:15. So, by the time they're loading up there and on the road, those buses are not leaving the MAC number till 3:20. A lot of kids still, I think the latest getting home was about 4:10. So, they're really only on the bus still for the most, some of them at 50 minutes. Some are already home, because I'm passing some of them on State Road, just following the bus up and down there once in a while, just to see what timing is going on. And a lot of the buses are already unloaded, traveling back on Route 6, heading back to Amaral. So, you know, timing is maybe anywhere from 20 minutes to 40 minutes, 50 minutes, maybe. So, we're still not at the full hour yet, as far as, you know, timing being on the bus.
Michelle, what's the cause? Is it just more parents doing parent pickup and drop-off, or is it the bus?
Uh, in the morning.
Well, either way.
I think you have more parents dropping off, but for middle school and high school, there's always been a large number of parents who drop off automatically in the morning. That even if they've paid for transportation, just because of timing purposes, a lot of kids, a lot of parents don't want the kids riding the bus from 6:40 in the morning. So, they're close, they drop them off at school, and then they either go back home or they go to work. So, I don't think it's the fact of the transportation increase with the pricing as much. I think it's just the buses are coming in later, where last year, the buses would start off on the road at like 6:20, 6:25. Our buses are not leaving till 6:33, 6:40, 6:45. So, that 15 minutes, what's happening now is the buses are overlapping with the families.
The parents.
So, there's an overlap there. But at the same time.
And you also do have some parents who are driving their student to the middle school and then driving their student to the high school.
And then going to the high school.
Who didn't do that before.
Right.
Because now the seventh and eighth graders have to pay for the bus. So, there is some of that, too, definitely going on.
So, I think, yeah, I think a lot of the traffic is a combination of both.
But it is, it is, I know there's always been a wait there, but I know it's been.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we have any control locally for the lights on 88. I think those are state lights. I mean, there may be something that can be done on County Road, you know, at the two entrances. Like, I see it sometimes, if somebody's got a left-hand blinker, somebody will pull off to the right hand, turning right lane, and then to get around them to keep going straight, while these people have to wait for the traffic to come and go, because they're turning left across traffic. You know, if they were to subdivide that area and just put a right-hand turn-only lane, that may help, that may not help.
Yeah.
Especially from the, from the.
A lot of people going straight, like they're all lined up, all going in the same area.
Right.
I wonder if even, even a police officer, I don't know.
Our SRO can handle that. Just send them out there one morning and have them.
Who?
The SRO.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. Having an officer basically maybe move the traffic, instead of allowing 10.
That's what I'm thinking.
To come through, maybe have 25 buses to come through, and maybe that'll help that 12-minute.
I don't know if he'll, like I said, I know that the lights in that intersection, it's 88, it's state. So, I don't know where, where the responsibilities lie.
We do have a selectman here, so maybe he can see what he can do on that end and.
Because we had, we had asked about the timing of the lights, and the state has to change those. We can't do it.
Is there anything else?
No, that was about it.
Any other questions? Michelle, I just want to tell you again, I think you've done, you've done a wonderful job. I know this has been very trying, and it's been very difficult. You have spent countless hours doing this and the food stuff and everything else that you do. And, you know, we, I think I'm speaking for everybody.
Absolutely.
I say, we truly appreciate it. You are invaluable, for sure.
Well, we hope that next year even goes, you know, we can smooth out all of our little loose ends this year, and maybe even tighten up more for buses for next year, and have a much smoother start next year than this year. So, that's my.
Yeah, you have definitely been.
That's my hope for next year, and a little bit of education on my end.
Have the parent calls quieted down?
Yep. No, parent calls have definitely quieted down. Like I said, I still have a few, and we're hoping to do a little more.
And you're still working with them, okay.
Still working with them, and get a little more experience in some safety areas and.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
FY budget update and expenditures. Dr. Colley?
We passed over this at the last school committee meeting, so hopefully, everybody will have had a chance to look at the details. We, a couple of things I want you to know, we're still tracking some of the changes that we had last year. So, for example, the preschool balance on the revolving account for preschool is down by about $24,000. That's because we had less classes of preschool, so we collected less income. You know, that's one of those things that will go up and down, depending on how many offerings we have. School lunch, the, again, the revolver is down by about $35,000, again, because the middle school had like a month or so last year of revenue that we did not collect, because a lot of the kids chose to bring in their own lunch, rather than do the bag lunches that we had when we opened up, and we couldn't have access to the cafeteria. So, those are two things I want to point out. The other thing I wanted to point out was, we do have the additional circuit breaker revolving account, but again, I'm gonna punt back to the principals, because I don't want to take over too much of the agenda. They're gonna talk about in the school improvement plans, things that they need. That may be one area of resources that we can apply to some of those needs. The other part is, when we did hirings this year, we had quite a few either teachers who were experienced that have left us, and we went ahead and hired people with less experience or degrees that not, are not as advanced. So, we're tracking about, anywhere about $90,000 worth of savings. So, we have two pots of money that the school committee can have access to for this year. Those are, you know, I'm trying to get the information as quick as I can to you guys this year. Last year, we started that process at mid-year. This year, I'm gonna try to start it right, right now. So, those are two areas. I know, I talked to the town administrator and the treasurer. They have built into the bonding, the monies for the, the interest for the bonds. And my understanding is that it won't come out of our budget, and it won't have to go into a warrant article. At this point, that's the information I walked out either yesterday or the day before. So, that's basically the picture at this point in time, as Ann Harkin mentioned. There are some potentials of kids that we will be saddled with, that we didn't account for before. Hopefully, they won't happen, or at the same time, we, you know, sometimes we got some kids leaving, some kids coming. Hopefully, the two will even out. But right now, the picture seems to be that there may be some funds that we could use that we did not expect.
Any questions?
Like I said, the principals may talk about that when they do the school improvement plans.
Carolina?
So, in the event that we do end up having to increase, increase the special ed budget, because we have one or two transfers coming in, we stripped that budget to zero, correct? The prepaid tuition?
We have in it enough for the kids that we have now.
So, if one or two new people come in, there's no money there? We don't have that cushion that we would normally have, because when we did the budget cutting, that was one of the pots of money that we.
We have less of a cushion. But again, we found, we have a cushion, because the circuit breaker came higher than we expected, no matter what. So, there is, there is a cushion now.
It just hasn't been allocated to anywhere.
Right.
Tony?
Cushion is kind of the wrong word, isn't it? And we, I don't mean to take, take away from what Caroline is saying, but we're allowed to prepay up to a percentage of our sped.
It's a, yeah, it's a mechanism.
So, we're able to move some of that money to the following year.
You can.
But the overall sped budget is the same. There just wasn't any prepayment.
Exactly. And what that does, however, is then any monies that you could have allocated to continue a prepayment basis, you don't have, unless some of these kids or some of these cases that we have pending go our way, in which case, you may have something for next year. May not be the, you know, you can only prepay a certain amount.
We just have to find it somewhere else if we need it. But the sped budget is there.
Right. Right. In other words, we took it out of the budget for this year. So, we have calculated for the number of students we have in residential or day schools, we have enough money for them. If, if we lose some of the cases that we have pending, or if additional kids come in and none leave, or we don't win any of our cases, we may be in the position of having to tap into those savings for that purpose. But remember, the longer we go into the school year, the less that.
The cost of it.
That fiscal responsibility will be. So, say, some of these cases don't get resolved till Christmas, then you're only looking at half a year, and that may play in our favor, or it may not. But then, the bite won't be as big, because you're already halfway through the year. One of the things I would recommend is, when you look at these additional funding sources that we now have, is some of it may be spent now, some of it you may hold in reserve. And as the year goes, if the special ed budget seems to not need additional funding, then release some of that money back into the budget for other purposes, like books and materials and the staff development, the things we've done in other years.
Anything else? Let's go on to the action agenda and the school improvement plans, starting with the MCAS accountability data with Ann Dargan.
Thank you. Good evening.
You live for this stuff, huh?
I do.
I know you do.
Last week, we talked a little bit with you about the district-wide accountability and how AYP has disappeared, but the PPI has come into play. Tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit more specific about the current MCAS data that has been released. And then the principals are going to share with you how they took that information and realigned it to this year's school improvement plans. So, just a little bit of an overview before we begin. Are you smarter than, just to give you an example of some of the types of questions that are actually real questions that were asked of our students' last school year. So, you can peruse this at your leisure. This presentation is up on our website already, as well as you can find this on the Department of Ed website. But just to give you an idea of the types of questions that are now being asked, it's not just rote-type questions, it's not just computation questions, it's really higher-order thinking. Their kids are being asked to synthesize, to evaluate, to create. An example of a grade six question, an example of the grade four, how many diagonals does a square have, an example of a grade three, a multiple-choice type question. Now, looking at the ELA, are you smarter than? The grade 10, that, this was the writing prompt, so the kids had to take a piece of literature that they were familiar with and a villain, and talk about the greatest impact that the villain had on the story. In grade seven, they had to talk about if they could trade places for a day with anybody that they chose, and they were asked to write about that experience.
I like that question.
In grade three, they were asked to write about a time they did something exciting, and then they had to give enough details to show what they did.
Grade four, correct.
And why, I'm sorry, grade four, and why that was exciting. So, those were the three grades that have the long composition. But I also then wanted to share you the expectation at grade three. So, grade three has a passage, okay? This is the United States of America, and the kids will read the passage, and then ultimately, there'll be about six to eight multiple-choice questions based on the passages that they will have read. The department now releases just about 50% of the questions, but over the course of the last 10 years or so, we do have a rough idea of the types of questions, as well as the particular strands. This slide just really represents, this is directly from the Department of Ed website. The current accountability data is up. Anybody can have access to Westport's data, to our school data, as well as other, any other city and school, district, and in the Commonwealth. This is pertinent to our district. This is the growth model. And if you look right dead center, in the middle, you'll see the X, and that currently is where overall the state has been showing achievement. This is the student growth percentile, so we really only have enough dots to reflect each grade four through 10. And each of those dots are a particular grade level, but the bigger picture is to look at what kind of growth is we showing here in Westport, as well as what type of achievement. So, in English Language Arts, you can see, you know, we're displaying at least average, if not better-than-average growth. This is the bar graph in a different version. And again, as I said to you the last time, the state really shows good growth as being anywhere between 40 and 60 percentile. Certainly, more is better, but we really aren't looking for anything less than 40%. So, overall, you can see, you know, we have many more in the darker green areas than we do in the lighter shade areas. So, we're striving to move those numbers as far to the right as possible. Looking at math, again, now, this is another way to display the student growth model. Again, we're looking at district data. The X is where the state overall has been placed, again, with 50 being, you know, just about smack in the middle. And you can see in our maths scores, we do have a little bit more room for improvement. We at least are showing higher achievement. You know, we're a little higher on the graph, but now we'd like to move a little bit more over to. over to the right so that we can show some higher achievement as well. And then, in looking at the bar graph, the vertical graph at this point in time, again, the darker, the color, the better off. And we can see while we have a good many of our students showing good growth, we have a number of our students right now that we have identified as at-risk. And when the principals come up and speak, many of them will be talking to you about what they have done so far with this information. Just as a recap, AYP, adequate yearly progress, has gone away, and the new accountability system is the PPI. That's the Progress and Performance Index. And if we were seventy-five, we'd be right on target. And at this point in time, our district, we are meeting the requirements, but we are at risk, and our growth is a little bit slower. So, we're striving to get that number a little bit higher. This just comes directly from the Department of Ed website as well, but it's an interesting tool. If you haven't been familiar or exposed to it before, it's called the DOT tool, the District Analysis Review and Assistance Tool. And this was the first page of it. I clicked on the link that said DOT files, that's the DOT for district. And then, I was able, on the upper-left-hand side, to do the green drag-down box, plug in Westport. And initially, what comes up is the department has looked at not only demographics, but economics, population, et cetera. And these are the districts that the Department of Ed is comparing our school district to. This is based on two thousand and eleven data, though. The information typically for the current spring release of MCAS won't be probably entered until around February or March, when the school report card comes out. So, this just gives you an idea of the comparison and how we did last year and how we can be measured against other districts. If you want it, up in the left-hand corner, also in addition to dragging down Westport, you can plug in any other district in the Commonwealth, and then you'll get a number of charts and graphs. You can see how we're doing in curriculum, you can see how we're doing in professional development, and you can compare finances, et cetera. So, it is a neat, interesting tool, just to compare how we're doing to other schools across the Commonwealth. So, now, I'm gonna turn the chair over to the principals. And the principals at this point in time, in addition to talking about MCAS, are just gonna talk about, over the summer, the opportunity that they had to review any current data that they have in existence and how they've used that data to write their school improvement plans and what they're doing for our kids in the schools.
Thank you. Before she leaves, does anybody have any specific questions on any of that? We'll bring you up again if after everything, we find there's questions. Welcome, Julie.
Okay, so, Macumber, obviously, as you all know, we don't have the same MCAS data that the other schools do, but I did want to go over some of the different initiatives and different things that we're going to be doing this year as well. The first one, talking about the guided reading levels. And this was last year. So, just giving you an update as to how we did. The developmentally-appropriate reading level to leave kindergarten is anywhere between a B and a C, okay? Independent reading. And we began this initiative in March of last year, really focusing on some flexible grouping and grouping kids to the reading level. But, it's not like when I was in school, at least, where if you stayed as a, you know, rainbow, you were as a rainbow all year. So, the beauty of the flexible grouping is that you can kind of move up and it just keeps on changing. So, you're not at the rainbow all year or the cloud. Dibbles, I'm sure you've heard that term used often, and it's basically an indicator of early literacy skills and success. It measures foundational skills, and specifically, what we're looking for in kindergarten is phonological awareness. And what we do is we adapt the instruction and provide adequate support based on the RTI measures. You okay, Karen?
You all right?
We can, can we excuse her for the night? And someone else can take notes, let her go home and take care of herself.
I'm okay. No, that's okay. I feel bad.
If you need to leave, we can get somebody else.
We can take notes, Karen.
All right. She's good.
So, eighty-four percent of the students that we had in kindergarten moved on to a first-grade level, first-grade, the developmental-appropriate level. And then, preschool, that's using the creative curriculum, which is...
Thank you, Liz.
I'm sorry.
Who's better, Karen?
Preschool uses the creative curriculum, which has thirty-eight different objectives that teachers have to give feedback on throughout the year. And it includes predictors of school success, and it's aligned with the Common Core. And as you all know, that we received our NAIC accreditation, I spoke about that earlier at a different school committee meeting, and we received a hundred percent compliance on seven out of ten of the standards. Basically, those were, there were, one, there were, one, two, three, seven, actually, the seven that I'm talking about, we actually got above a hundred, so I'm not sure how that happened, but they don't use the same math.
You did a good job.
I do. But, that's okay.
Extra credit.
That's right. So, anyway, moving on to the action plan. Brigance is basically a screening, and the difference between a screening and an actual assessment, like a pre-assessment type thing or a kindergarten readiness type thing, that the screening will identify different problem areas that the child is having, whereas it's more of a developmental tool, whereas an assessment or like a pre-assessment before they come into kindergarten, that's totally different, and that's used more for, you know, what they've learned or what they know, like the actual physical A, B, C, what do they know? So, it's not a readiness test, and we're actually looking into doing something like that next year for the kindergartners or at the end of this year. And basically, what that number, that seventy-four percent means, there's a cutoff score of sixty-five, and seventy, only twenty-eight, twenty-eight students or twenty-four percent of our students going into kindergarten scored below that. Many of them, as you know, might have not gone to our preschool or, you know, things of that nature. The numeracy, there's the test of early numeracy that we're starting, and obviously, the GoMath that you all know and love. And then, literacy, that's just an extension of the guided reading. The teachers are starting their reading groups early on. In fact, some teachers have actually started them already. And we would like to increase our level library because we find that the teachers, by the end of the year, actually wanted the HIJ books, books that are end of first grade, beginning of second grade books. They actually wanted, they were asking me, can we fund, can we get some of those books? So, I have maybe six in the whole school, so that would be helpful if we had stuff like that, just so that we could kind of push those kids a little further. Because there were many kids that moved on above, actually, many, many kids moved on above a B, C. So...
We ran out of books for them to read in kindergarten?
No, I kept getting more books, but we had one.
They ran out of the levels.
That's right.
They didn't have enough copies.
We didn't run out.
They didn't have enough copies.
The multiple copies.
Right, we didn't have, so if you read, you know, Sally's Shoes, and you had Sally's Shoes for a week, then you could not read Sally's Shoes. Normally, when you have guided reading, there's six copies of it, but I couldn't afford to buy six copies of it. I could afford to buy one copy of six of them instead of, for example, we have about a hundred and twenty A-level books in the school. So, anyway. Getting on with that, preschool, they are actually developing early literacy assessments, moving on with that whole literacy initiative. And they are going to be kind of working towards some kind of assessment that uses what they're using now, they just got a new program in.
No, whatever she's done.
Oh.
She can finish.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, they have the Letter People curriculum, which I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's a weekly type of curriculum that introduces letters at the developmentally-appropriate stage, and it has a whole reading, pre-reading assessment and curriculum merging reading to go along with it. I know that in looking at all the data, it has been very helpful to have some, you know, the time to look at the data and crunch these numbers for you. Currently, our class size is about twenty-three, twenty-four, depending on the classroom. With the pre-K, classroom sizes are smaller, obviously, because we have state regulations. It's been very helpful, and I wanted to thank you for keeping the staff that I do have and maintaining that. That's allowed me to do what I have done. There's various DESE, so the regular DOE, okay? We also have to follow the EEC, which is the Early Education and Care Guidelines for the preschool for the three- and four-year-olds. So, there's a bunch of different populations that we have to go by. So, I just wanted to thank you for maintaining the, especially like the school-adjusted counselor role. That was very helpful, so I appreciate that.
Eric?
Not buying one book of six different levels. Have you, what's it cost to have HIJ and the number of books that you need?
Nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
More or less, kind of.
And twenty-two cents.
And if you had that money on tomorrow, you would go out and buy those books?
That goes, that sale goes off October first. Hey, I know my sales.
We had, we were tracking a hundred and fifty thousand last week. We're talking about a sped director, assistant sped director, and for nine hundred dollars, if we don't have a good foundation of reading, these MCAS scores are...
Well, I think it's very important myself because the teachers are so into, they really got so into it. They were begging me, can you get me some more HIJ books or, you know, whatever it was specifically? They really were getting into it. And I know that Tom has spoken before about how that's been helpful to have those kids be at that higher level, to hold them to those higher standards later on.
Well, we've sat here and we've talked about, well, what do we need to do to get these scores where they need to be? What do we need to do to get the math scores where they need to be?
Macumber's where we start.
And we've been told the same thing. We need reading books. We need more series of certain things and, I mean...
Well, the funny thing, it's funny that you should say that because specifically, and just knowing the math, fortunately and unfortunately, that the kids are having problems, as most kids do, with word problems. So, you know, having that foundation where they're not struggling to read because those, the new assessment that's coming up is gonna be at a certain lexile level, so it's similar to this, where they have to be able to read at this to just get Sally has five apples.
So, reading and math are actually coming together on how some of our children's math scores are.
I mean, that's my opinion. I don't mean to step on any toes.
This is an action agenda. Is that...
Absolutely.
All right, is there a second?
I'm motioning to transfer a thousand dollars.
Nine hundred and...
Well, no, a thousand, just in case, you know, that sale, I think it was, you know, percentage on it.
Did you second that?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think...
There shouldn't be any.
No.
Just heard it.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is why we're here. We're here for the kids.
No, I think that's wonderful.
And we're here to make sure they have what they need. And if we're tracking the savings and you're telling me you need nine hundred dollars so that our children get a better foundation...
And it's a good credit to the staff that's willing to, you know, not willing, I mean, that's for sure, but they're very excited about this. And they're, yes, they're eager to really push the kids too, so...
The important thing is that you told us, you know, we need to hear about these things.
Okay.
It's good.
Super-duper.
Now, we'll be hearing about them.
Can't wait to hear, elementary school needs some.
One a night. One a night.
You good?
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Actually, there's a bigger smile. Tom, I think you're next.
See what his wish list is.
Yeah, he's making his list.
Way too big of a smile.
Oh, and he has reinforcements with him.
In case I figure out something she can piggyback on it.
Oh. I'm Mike Julie. I just wanna take a couple of minutes to highlight some of the things, and it's right in the plan itself. And talk for a moment about student achievement, what we're looking to do with... Excuse me? All right, we're gonna, we'll just, we'll just first go in a different direction, and the slides are in reverse order. So, this, as far as the MCAS scores go, the first slide there with the grade three ELA, we did see some improvement. We are hoping for much more improvement in the coming years because the kindergarten is now having, and the first and second graders who are now third graders have had foundations. We think that's giving them a much stronger base for their ability to perform well. We did talk about the...
Now, before you go any further...
Yes.
Can you just, for parents that may be listening for the first time, I know that I've had people contact me who've been watching. What is foundations?
Okay, foundations is a phonics-based program. It starts in kindergarten and it moves gradually through the grades. This year, we have it again in first and second. We do have a pilot program going in grade three. We were hoping to do it grade what level, but we were unable to do the funding. But, we are trying it with the third grade, and we found some initial testing that showed that there is a need for it. So, that would be a hope for next year, to maybe to get it into the third grade on a permanent basis. It's sounding out words, vowels, blends, consonants, and the utilization of the basics in order to build a stronger foundation.
And then, the, sorry, the children that have not exactly met their benchmark at the end of second grade, we have what we call double dose. So, we identify those children that still need a little bit more extra, thank you, a little bit more extra time. And so, we have trained teachers from our reading specialist staff, as well as our special ed staff. And so, what we do with those children is they get a little bit of extra, so they get more foundations. So, if they're not quite ready to wean away from that type of phonics program, we still have that support in grade three, which we have not had in the past.
Also, one of the things we wanted to point out in regards to the ELA, both in third and fourth grade, is we found weaknesses in the open response area and the grade four writing. And to piggyback with what Julie just said, Dr. Dogan gave me a quote to get a district writing program because we felt the need for it, and I think that Dr. Kelly mentioned that in the district improvement plan. And Ann just quoted me fourteen thousand and change. Just figured we'd throw that out there.
Not nine hundred, but...
No, a lot more, but that is something that...
You've got more kids.
Right, a lot more children.
Yeah, we do. This is true.
In regards to math, we saw some good improvement in the third-grade math with the thirty-four percent being, meaning advanced, and thirty-four percent being proficient. So, we're seeing some progress there. I think we're gonna see more progress in the future. We now have a full-time Title I teacher. She's overseeing the Title I services. In the past, we just had a couple of pairs, or TAs, and they were kind of functioning on their own. Now, we have someone to direct them, and she's also very good at scheduling, so she's utilizing her ability to put more people in the classrooms, as opposed to pulling out as much as we have in the past, we're trying to have more aid in the room, working with the teachers, so the teachers don't miss some of the instruction with their students. Also, we have the GoMath program that was mentioned. It aligns with the Common Core. We're having ongoing professional development. The teachers' initial response has been very good. Dr. Dogan had someone in last week to do a brief overview for about an hour per grade level, and on the second week of October, they're each gonna have a half a day as part of their grade-level training. There's a lot of different components of the program, which we are hoping to utilize, including a home component where a student would get a password and a username and be able to do some work at home so that parents could get a better understanding of it. And I hope sometime in October, after that training, is to bring parents in for a family night to further explain the program. Grade four math scores were a little bit stagnant, but once again, the hope would be that once we have this new program in place and we have the additional staff member on board, we're gonna see some gains in that also. The growth model, as Dr. Dogan had mentioned, is a positive for our fourth graders. If you go by the old formula, you may look at and say, oh gee, those scores aren't that good. But, again, on a positive note, there is growth there. We're at basically sixty percent, so, you know, the school, the students are showing growth, which is one of our main concerns. It's the same thing with the math. The math is also showing growth. We're basically at sixty percent and moving forward. So, there's a lot ahead of us, and we're ready for the challenge. Also, we have an assessment calendar that is in here that we've decided to go the route of the, as I mentioned, the GoMath is going to be our number-one priority. We're also gonna be working with MCAS. First and second grade, they're gonna be utilizing the Ames Web Program, which is going to enable us to collect more data. Our main just this year is the collection of data and to try to find out where we need to improve. Now, in the school improvement plan itself, which is not listed up there, we have identified the students who had the weakest scores in the MCAS, the high-need students, the low-income students, students with disabilities, as well as all the students, and trying to concentrate more resources and effort into that area. Also, the grade four teachers are developing student success plans for all students that got the needs improvement or a warning score. Those plans are gonna be ready by the thirtieth of September, and we'll be notifying parents and trying to make sure that the parents are aware of the needs that need to take place, not just in the school, but at home also. Professional development is ongoing, as I mentioned a couple of moments... As I mentioned a couple of moments ago, Dr. Dogan has provided the Go Math training. We're also going to be having some training for the staff on the Ames Web Program to have better utilization of it. Common assessments are being constantly worked on by the staff. A number of our staff have included that in their goals to develop the common assessments during the course of the school year. In regards to instruction, we want to continue to implement the, the running records assessment that's used in conjunction with the guided reading. As always, we could always use more books for the guided reading library. We are continuing and will continue to put as many resources as we possibly can in that direction. Bi-weekly progress monitoring, as Mrs. Saskowitz said, is, is ongoing for students who show a need in either the DIBBLES or any of the other initiatives, the running records and so on. We also had all our math teachers do a prerequisite and a beginning of the year scores to get some initial numbers for the mathematics, which we're going to be looking at in a, on a monthly basis to try to track the progress of the students continuously. We're also going to be utilizing the test of early numeracy for any students who did not score well on the prerequisite or the beginning of the year in, in math. So we're going to do a lot of assessing, accumulate as much data as you can to try to, you know, to get to the bottom of what we exactly need to do to ensure the success of the students. School climate, we have had some training this summer. We had a, an initiative where we brought in a specialist in positive behavior intervention strategies, and we developed a, a school-wide hallway policy, which we call halls, which the expectations are how the students transition. We also have a, a program in the cafeteria, stop, look, and listen. And we are, of course, continuing the responsive classroom. There was a training last week and there will be another training in October. And our partnerships, just happy to announce once again that BJ's Wholesale is again partnering with us this year. They just sent us a five hundred dollar check for us to utilize, which the, the feeling right now is they're going to be using that to add to our guided reading library. And Mr. Feinstein, fortunately, is also going to be with us again. In regards to personal growth for our students, we hope to get a, a school council going again. We didn't get that started until late last year and it worked very well. The students became responsible for a lot of the activities in the school and were quick to share their thoughts. I also wanted to just take a moment, as Julie did too, thank you folks for keeping our classes at the level that they're at. The class size average in grade one is twenty-two with the seven first grades. Grade two, twenty-two. Grade three, we had a little bit of a spike in enrollment this summer, so we're up to twenty-five, twenty-six. And grade four, the average is twenty-two. So we, we do appreciate your reference to, to remain in those levels for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. And, and I know with all of the, the difficulty with transportation and some of the other things that have, have occurred, this is why we did that, so that we would keep the classrooms at a stable level if we could, or a little lower. So maybe we did something good ultimately.
You did, absolutely. You did.
I have a couple of questions, though. And I know growth, you're looking at growth when you see the M-CAS scores. So, and for those of you that may not understand, the way it works is they look at a student's score one year, they look at the student's score the following year, and they compare that to a student who also scored within the same range, and they look at their growth compared to that student. I don't know if I explained that well. And I understand that, you know, we're seeing growth and we want to see as many kids as we can get better. My question for you is when I look at the third grade to fourth grade score and I see, for example, with E L A, we dropped eight kids, if you take the two top proficient and advanced, and you take the two bottom warning and needs improvement, we dropped eight kids from the first where we want them down into the lower section for that same class. So the kids that tested in third grade moved into fourth grade. Out of those kids, eight kids moved from either advanced, probably proficient, over to the bottom section. And then in math, we lost fourteen. So what are we doing for those kids? The kids that are on the bubble, the kids that we are really wanting, those are the kids we really want to shift. We want to see the, obviously, growth in all of them, but we want to get those kids out of that warning area, so...
That's where the student success lines are going to come into play. The, the parents are being notified, the children are made aware of that, and we're making sure that these are the children who are tested for the Title I services. And we are also going to begin the Achieve Three Thousand, which is a kind of a reading comprehension program. We initially were going to use that as a kind of a double dose, but conversation over the last few weeks and at the recommendation of Mrs. Lewis, we are going to make that a school-wide endeavor and have all of our fourth graders participate in that every Friday. We're going to block, chunk off like an hour of time. They're going to be going into the, the library or to the computer room, and they are going to have the ability to get on the computer. It's going to hopefully push the higher-end students also.
So when you look at those scores, and maybe, I don't know if you guys have looked at it more in depth or if Anne Dargan has, what was, what was it that, was there a common theme that pushed these kids back for E L A and math, or was it sort of all over the board?
I think what really happened is that for a very long time, we didn't really have in place, we didn't have the, what we call a response to intervention. We didn't really have that model solidly in place. It, it, it was sporadic. And so consequently, teachers tried to do what they, what they can to try to fill those gaps and, and bridge those gaps as much as possible. But that particular class, I think, in overall, we did identify throughout last year in, in fourth grade, we did identify quite a few children who really did, they did, were identified with either learning disabilities or having some gaps that really needed a specialized, more of a specialized approach, maybe a lot more of differentiating instruction and that type of thing. And again, you know, this is all, it's all a learning curve. So these are all the different kinds of initiatives that we've put in place for now. Teachers are being trained in how to differentiate instruction. That particular group, guided reading, was not, was not something that those kids really had. They had it a little bit in third, they had it a little bit in fourth, but certainly wasn't anything. They're, they're also a group, no phonics, you know, other than a little bit of phonics here and there. So there's a lot of reasons when you really look back and if you look at, at the profile of that particular grade level. I think there's a lot of little things that just, you know, were missed. And, and so we, we are aware of that. The student success plans, the first time in a long time that we've actually sat down before school started and the fourth grade teachers identified the students who were at needs improvement and warning. So they are, they are identified in September and not necessarily later on, you know, after the first trimester. So I think that there's a lot of things that we are putting in place, the data, the data analysis, the collection of data, the common assessments. Another common assessment just simply means that whatever is being taught in five or six different rooms, when it is done, the test is exactly the same. So every child takes the exact same test that the teachers have created using, using the, the Common Core standards. So I think there's a lot of things that weren't in place that are in place.
Right. I think I mentioned that back in one of the meetings we had in June about how the students have not been identified when they were in third grade. So now, as Chris said, we're, we're hoping to catch up on that. So we've got new things in place.
So yeah, that was kind of my question. I mean, you guys know which group of students brought, you know, the, the proficient number, the needs improvement number up?
Mm-hmm.
And you guys know which, who those kids are?
Absolutely.
And their history, obviously, so...
Absolutely.
We just, we want to target those kids and make sure that the current third graders, they don't have that same, a group that's going to make that same drop next year.
Exactly.
So we're able to narrow in on exactly these kids. We can go back and track and see where...
Exactly. We can do that, not only with the current third grade, we can do it with the progress monitoring that we do with DIBBLES, the progress monitoring that we do with running record. One of the initiatives that have been put in place by the reading staff, the reading specialist staff, is any child who has not made benchmark, they, normally benchmarks are done three times a year. In other words, a child is, their, their reading level is assessed three times a year, September, January, and June. Any child who has been assessed and has not reached grade level, okay, or what we call benchmark, those students are going to be reassessed every month. So that makes a big difference. So it's not three times until we see, we can start to track that progress and see them beginning to make, it should be a steady growth, it should be a steady increase, but that's what we want to see. Not saying in September, boy, this child is below grade level, and they're not looking again until January. That's a big gap of time. So this way, they're now looking at them every single month. So those kids are identified and are being, are being tracked, not only by their classroom teacher, which is, as Mr. Gastal said, a lot of the Title I and the intervention was pull-out, and we have reversed that, so it's all in the classroom. So the children are getting their, their instruction with their teachers, they're getting the support from, from trained reading specialist staff. So I really feel very, very confident, we feel very confident, that doing this amount of progress monitoring, though it can be, it's a lot of work, but in the end, it's, it's fruitful and productive.
Eric.
I don't know how to actually say this, but out of those kids that need improvement, have they tracked back to actual homework? Because I know every day my son comes home with his backpack, he has fifteen minutes of reading and this and that, we sign off on it. Has the homework correlated at all to what needs improvement at all? I don't know if I'm even saying that right.
I, I think the homework has remained pretty consistent throughout the, the grades. It may be ten minutes or fifteen minutes in first grade and just, you know, bump it up as, as they go along. But yeah, we have had discussions in regards to making sure, as, as Mrs. Saskowitz just said, that things are consistent across the board. We don't want one teacher giving something and the other teacher giving something very different.
I think I didn't ask you right.
Yeah, I know you're asking.
Are the parents, are the lack of parent involvement have anything to do with the scores that their kids are performing in school?
Some. I, you know, when you look down and you look at the breakdown of the growth, the growth model and you look at it based on, you know, on the different categories, I think some. But I think in general, a lot of it has been that kids go home and they, they don't always understand what that homework is. So again, I think that parent-teacher communication, just having the parent call the teacher, get in touch with the teacher, email the teacher...
We do have a parent outreach. That's actually what I'm getting to. I know with Head Start, they have a lot of actual home visits to the home and, you know, here's what, here's what the kid's doing in school, this and that. Just wondering if we had anything like that at all?
Nothing, nothing definitive in place, but I think with the new evaluation system, that you're going to be seeing more of that because it's one of the components in the evaluations. Not that people didn't do it before, now people are going to become more aware of it. Also, I, I think that sometimes parents may have had a negative experience in school, so they're, they're very hesitant sometimes to come in and ask questions. So we always tell them, the door is always open. Every question is important. If you have a question about your child, please let us know. So we try to encourage that.
Now, before we let you go, can you, you talked about the writing program that you're looking at some point to implement. Can you explain what you're looking?
Dr. Dogan is inclined to go toward the, the Write Trade program. She could probably do more justice to it than I could.
I'd just like to hear it and then...
It puts a scope and sequence to our writing, as I alluded to the last time around. We have various components now, and some teachers are doing some formalized writing instruction, others are doing more free write-type instruction. We don't necessarily have a scope and sequence where conventions of writing or even just graphic organizers are being instructed. We saw a number of our students on the M-CAS, short answers in particular, where we could get anywhere between zero to two points on a response, and many of our youngsters got a zero, which tells us they didn't even make any attempt to answer those questions. So this program just really standardizes and gives us the scope and sequence at what grade level, what's going to happen. It's actually a K through six program.
Also, one last thing, if I may. The superintendent said he was kicking the ball over to the, the principals in regards to the new evaluation system. It's creating a lot more time from, from the administrators. So what we had talked about during the retreat this summer was the possibility of maybe getting liaisons or people to run the meetings. I know that has been discussed in the past, so not to complain, but just to make you folks aware of, of the fact that this is, is now taking much longer to be doing, like eight, nine, ten visits, as well as a, a formal observation, and also running the special education meetings, which we have every Wednesday. So that means that every Wednesday, either Mrs. Saskowitz or I are offline in order to attend these meetings. So it's kind of taking away of our, from our ability to do that. So we just wanted to make you aware of that.
Tom, you guys share the evaluations or you do it?
Yes, we do. No, we share.
We share them.
Right.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
How, how we doing? I don't know how this works, but...
Try it.
Oh, there we go. Okay. You look at our M-CAS scores, I chose to take the, the route of just looking at the past year's scores. And up on your screen or up on the board, it, it shows the, the percentage of students in each grade level scoring proficient or advanced, and then those scoring warning. And in between those two numbers are your needs improvement kids. When you look at E L A, those students in needs improvement or warning, those turn into our targeted students. When you look at the, the chart up there, it's, it shows a lot of good progress throughout the school, and that's why I wanted to, to zoom in on and, and talk about that. You know, kids coming into fifth grade and our fifth grade scores are difficult, and we've been, been working to get them up. As they progress through the school, getting some targeted instruction, you know, we go from sixty-five percent proficient advanced to eighty-nine percent proficient advanced, nine to warning, three to warning. So there's a lot of good work being done at the middle school in E L A. And I just want to highlight those people, you know, that work primarily is being done by people like Nancy Tripp, Mary Lynch, the two Burneers, John and Bill Burneer, and Nicole Bell-Diaz, who is now here, and next year, and this school year, Erin Connolly. And what they're doing is, they are doing response to intervention. They are, they teach, instead of four classes a day, they teach three classes. And it's, and what happens is during that, the extra period, they are taking small groups of, of children in either writing groups or reading groups and giving them direct instruction. Their own students who they have in English class, they are then zooming in and working on those skills. So the jump in seventh and eighth grade is primarily, that work is happening in seventh and eighth grade. In fifth and sixth, we have people like Betty Karim, who are coming in part-time and working on kids in small group instruction. Anne Clark is also working with small kids in small group instruction, trying to get these, these scores up. Fifth grade, the, the targeted instruction that, that we're going for, and I know the elementary school spoke about it, is the Achieve Three Thousand. And it's an online program. The kids can go in, they will be going in twice during the school day, and then the encouragement, and I'll talk about this at open house, the encouragement is that they're doing this at home. And, and parents can be going on with their kids, seeing the progress, seeing their lexile numbers go up. So I'm really excited about that kind of work. Hold on, sorry. Mathematics is, is another question. Basically, our scores are not very well good, and there's a lot of improvement that we can't do in math. One of the things, and this, this, these scores actually turned into my goal seven of the school, the school improvement plan, where we talked about mathematics and we talked about response to intervention. The issue with mathematics, as I just spoke about in English Language Arts, we have basically five teachers working in seventh and eighth grade, doing R T I, doing response to intervention in small groups. In mathematics, I have three teachers teaching full-time. There is no help in mathematics. There's no extra person, there's no Title I support. What I do have is a math tutor. Right now, there's, there's ten thousand dollars in a math tutor who primarily historically has come in, and last year, we didn't use that, those funds for a, a few reasons. And in the past, we have used those to give kids targeted instruction for the M-CAS test. Since we're talking about some extra funds and spending, I might as well trump the...
Go for it.
The elementary school.
Uh-oh. What's going on?
If we could add to that ten thousand dollars to get a certified teacher in, or some, a part-time teacher and parent professionals in, to work with kids directly in math, to give them response intervention, small groups of children, pull aside our warning and our needs improvement kids, and give them the same small group instruction that they're getting in ELA, I think you're going to see those math scores go up. When we have coming into the middle school this year, I want to say sixty-three students who needed help in ELA, that extra small group instruction, leaving the eighth grade, that number was down by about ninety percent. So that small group instruction does work. Pulling kids aside outside of the math instruction, they still get math instruction. They still get their math class, but someone giving them, filling in some gaps, and just extending what they're doing. In sixth grade, we do have that. We have a math lab for, that one sixth grade teacher does, and they did this last year as well, but that's only hitting sixth graders. So I would be looking for someone to help out the fifth, seventh, and the eighth grade students.
I have one question for you. I know there's a lot of movement in the middle school, meaning kids leaving, kids coming. And surprisingly, there were quite a few kids that came to the middle school over the last year or so.
Last summer, we had a huge influx of kids, yes.
From different schools?
Yep.
So I'm curious, out of the kids that were new to the district, that hadn't gone through, do we break that down? Do we know, do some of those influxes from other districts, or I don't mean necessarily, but other schools, affect what it appears our students are doing?
As in the MCAS scores?
Yeah.
As far as I know, these are the scores of our students that were in our building last year.
No, I understand that. And out of those, just say you had a student, and I'm just being totally hypothetical. You had a student that was in another school up through sixth grade, say. And they come to us either mid-year or at the beginning of the year. They go through and they test, and have never taken, potentially never taken an MCAS before, depending on where they came from. Do we have a lot of students like that? And do we look at what those students are doing and identify them as maybe needing a little more additional help? Because they're sort of a different type of student, maybe because they maybe haven't grown up with these tests and not used to them?
We've had a couple of those kids.
Okay.
And a couple of those kids, there's one girl in eighth grade right now who never took, her first math MCAS test was when she was in seventh grade, and she did not do very well. All of her teachers are telling us that she is, she will, you know, score proficient or advanced in this year's MCAS, but she was, I want to say, a low needs improvement. Just because she was never exposed to the test and never exposed to our curriculum. So there are some of those kids.
So there are.
Hopefully, the other systems where they're feeding us, they are going, you're using the math, the frameworks and the Common Core, and so they are teaching the same basic skills, probably not in the same sequence, probably not the same, using the same units of study, but they are hitting them. So...
I was just curious.
We do look at those kids, and the guidance councils do a great job of pulling those kids aside, looking at their transcripts, looking at where they were, and putting them into classes that they feel will benefit them.
I know we do get a lot of movement, you know, even kids coming into foster homes, or maybe they might have been in another district for a long time. I don't know. And I imagine, from a teaching perspective, it must be very difficult to make sure that they're ready. Just to give, I mean, some credit to them, or, I mean...
Alec, have we ever had that additional staff in the fifth grade to help the kids with the math?
And additionally?
Well, that we have, like in sixth, we have that.
No, no.
So we've never had that in fifth grade?
No. Even when the small group, the seventh grade group, was in fifth grade, no. It was, you know, there were only five groups. There weren't any more groups than that. You know, five, you know, classes of fifth graders. At that point, there was no extra support. We do have, like Anne Clark does give extra support to kids absolutely in ELA, yes. I think you're talking about math. Is that correct? Yeah, no, we don't. I think historically, we did at the middle school. At one point, there was a math specialist. But I do believe due to a bunch of cuts, it was cut before I got here, so...
Eric.
I know you said you'd like to have this and that. Can you have an actual hard copy proposal of what you're actually looking for? Because you said, teacher, parent, this and that.
If I had an extra teacher, thirty thousand dollars, because to add to the ten thousand that's there already, that would get us a teacher with experience or a teacher with a master's that we can direct in teaching these kids in small group instruction. That would be perfect for me.
You wouldn't want to hire, say, a math teacher?
This person would be a...
It's general educator, it's elementary.
This person would be a math teacher, a certified middle school math teacher, who would give small group instruction when the kids are in their exploratory classes. We'd pull them out of some explorators. This person would then go into classrooms when those kids are in their math class to give some extra support. I could see that being, you worked on that both ways.
No, go ahead.
I can't, I'm sorry. Just one other thing on that. If this is a position that we would hold over till next year, what I would want to do is what the English department is doing, and where every teacher, every math teacher, has basically a period where they do RTI with their kids, with the kids that need direct instruction. So looking at those seventh and eighth grade kids, and okay, this is what I can do for them.
We have probably a great resource right here in the school of AP Math kids. Is there any possibility of getting them to tutor and mentor those kids?
I think it would be a scheduling issue. It's a good idea, but I'm just thinking, they're both in math at the same time.
I'll add to that, and maybe Mrs. Tudelo can put your brains together. I mean, some of these kids do have the dual block up here, where they have a free block every day, and that's those kids. So I actually think it's a phenomenal idea. In addition, these kids, many of them are honor society kids, looking for community service hours because they're required to do that, and a lot of them are looking to...
Kill three birds with one stone.
They're also looking to add to their resumes, show some leadership, and some different things.
I don't have a problem looking at, that is a good idea, as long as the schedules mesh. I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yeah.
I would, though, still have to advocate for someone, a certified teacher that could come in and work with those kids.
But we're just maybe, I mean, I think it's a fabulous idea to just get some help to some of those truly struggling students that you just don't have enough people to help with. And my question, pretty piggybacking off of that, what are we doing down there for the other spectrum of kids?
For the advanced?
Or the kids that maybe aren't advanced, but maybe you want to push them to advanced, or on the bubble of being advanced.
That is, the classroom teachers, a diversified instruction, and hoping that they can push those proficient kids into advanced. The sixth grade, one of those math lab sessions is going to be for those kids who are, you know, proficient to advanced, looking at those kids. We also have the four math clubs, I'm sorry, the three math clubs after school that the Ed Foundation is funding, and those are purely math enrichment. Kids who have scored advanced in the math, the math MCAS test, if they want some more enriching things after school, there's that program after school. And like I said, in sixth grade, because she has one block extra, she's taking some extra math kids and working with those high kids.
What did you see for growth in that group? Because it's not on here.
The sixth grade?
In gen, just in general, I mean, generally speaking, that middle group, so the kids that scored proficient, or even into the advanced, what did you see for their growth? Are we seeing growth in those kids?
Yes, we are. Yes. One of the good things with the new educator evaluation program is that, you know, the teachers have to now look at that data. You know, they always have, but really look at it in-depth and come up with some goals. And the math department in seventh and eighth grade, and I know in fifth and sixth grade are doing the same thing, they are looking at not only those proficient, advanced kids, but also looking at what is holding up some of those needs improvement kids from pushing into proficient? Is it the open response questions? They're looking at the open response questions, the critical thinking skills that they're going to need. That's what they're targeting. They're going to be targeting for the next year, you know, strategies that they're going to implement within their classroom to push those kids up.
And it all goes back to reading.
It does.
Alec, we have the extra help in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that math tutor?
For... Right now, the way it stands, it's just sixth grade.
ELA.
For ELA, we have five through eight. We have help for kids of five through eight.
Okay, but math only six, so I mean...
So that's why I'm saying...
So the fifth grade is a kind of tread in water, and...
They have the classroom, you know, teachers who are working with them.
If you got them earlier, then there would be less need in the latter grades.
Absolutely, yes. And that shows through our ELA scores. And giving that assistance throughout the year has brought more kids into proficient and advanced.
Anything else?
Yeah. We keep talking about this additional help, you know, whatever, pulling kids out, extra help in the class. I mean, is it more of, why don't we change however it is we're doing it, just so that we actually spend more time, so that this classroom teacher physically spends more time with her math? Maybe it's not an hour a day, maybe it needs to be an hour and a half, and then we don't need to have these kids take an extra hour of class to kind of help them along. You know, I don't know.
The way the middle school is situated, fifth graders have science five days a week, and everything is broken down to periods, fifty-three minutes apiece. So they have five sections of science, five sections of social studies. They have seven sections. So in a five-day rotation, they will have math seven times a day, seven times the rotation a week. And they'll have ELA seven times as well. So they are getting a double dose in fifth grade of math. And when they get to sixth grade, it's a similar approach. Seventh and eighth grade, every single subject, math, ELA, social studies, and science, all meet six times, which equals out to the amount of periods a day. I think it's taking the teaching approach that we're doing. We are piloting Go Math in fifth grade and sixth grade. And I, what I have seen in that program, I really like. It is really aligned to the Common Core, and the approaches and the setup of the book and everything, I really like that.
So you're looking for a book series as well as a person?
Well, we're piloting that right now. We're piloting Go Math right now in two, in one fifth grade class and one sixth grade class. And it is, it's...
So it's only in one class?
It's only in one class. One teacher might be doing it with both sections of her class. And the sixth grade one, I think, is doing it with her sections of math. But I'm really, you know, looking at that to help out our math scores, because it is so aligned, and it will give focus to what they're teaching.
Okay. All right. And I still really like your idea of using some of our high schoolers. And I know, I mean, I know they use them up here. They tutor one another. So our own students are tutoring our kids, so I'm sure they could maybe at least be some kind of a help down there. We've got some very smart kids up here that...
Even if it's just an after-school program?
I would, really, any kind of help they could do, it'd be great.
Our seniors, a lot of them drive, so they could certainly maybe fit something into the dual blocks that a lot of them have as they're doing their dual enrollment after school, so they have that free time during the day. So that might be something that we can at least offer, you know, get some kind of a, I don't know, a tutoring thing going at the library or even in the school.
That's fine.
I mean, as a district, we need to make, get a focus.
I understand that. I agree with you.
We need to do something.
But he's looking at book series and people, and I mean, I think at least we can also add another component of it. So, anything else?
And really quickly, the science scores are up there. That's that next slide. And just the critical needs, like we said, mathematics. And that's identification, you know, RTI tiered instruction. That's all in math. We have it in ELA, and it's very successful in ELA. It's just replicating that in math.
What are the science, what are the science tests in? What type of science is it?
Oh, the type?
It's just general, it's just general science? It's not like in high school, they have physics?
No, no, no. It's just, it's general science, and it's hitting the standards that they have for fifth grade. I think it's third through fifth grade. So a fifth grader taking that test needs to remember what they're doing, you know, back in fourth grade and third grade. And the same thing with an eighth grader. It's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science.
Alec, just so people at home understand, on the math MCAS scores, we know which part of the test that the kids obviously are struggling with.
Yes.
Which part of the math are the kids struggling with?
The open response questions, that critical thinking skills?
Which is word problems? Is that basically what we're talking about?
Yes, it's more than word problems, but yes, you know, a short answer it is.
Okay.
That is an area that, and the teachers looked at that. The teachers looked actually for the past three years. They got three years' worth of MCAS testing, just to see what the pattern has been.
Which is typically the harder...
A lot of credit.
The harder thing to get, I guess, but that's definitely...
In an open response question there, it's not just find the answer, it's write the answer in...
So you're not only hitting your math skills, you're hitting your ELA skills, you're hitting your writing skills. There's a lot of skills that go into just that answer.
And are they being graded on the writing portion? So...
Oh, you mean the exact, like...
Grammar? No.
Grammar, no. No. But they do look at the student's thought process behind it, and again, it's a score one through four, so...
But once again, it's hitting everything. It's hitting the math, it's hitting the writing, it's hitting the reading. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll say. Mrs. Tudelo?
So you involve my students? Take all the kids?
So you brought your muscle in?
Yes, my English muscle. Yeah, good evening. Going to start with looking at the ELA scores. And obviously, we were very pleased with the results we saw in ELA, with ninety percent of our students scoring in the advanced or proficient range. And where we continue to see the spike is in that proficient area. We're up ten percentage points from the prior year. And while when you look at that, it says three percent failing rate at the high school, we actually only had one student fail the ELA MCAS. The others are out of district special education students. So we only had one failing rate. But I'm going to ask Mrs. Antonelli to talk a little bit about what she does in ELA, because I truly feel that has made a huge difference in the last few years in the ELA scores.
I have to say that I'm thrilled to see, a little nervous about next year's scores now, but the fact that our students were able to make that leap, most importantly, that they're proficient, but also that they're able to do advanced work. And I think that the whole initiative of looking cross-content, not just at their English class, for deeper thinking skills, and the fact that kids are looking to their text for evidence, to support their thinking. Prior to the kids taking the MCAS score test, we do, I meet with every tenth grade student and talk to them about what book they think they might be addressing in response to the prompt. And I say to the kids, you know, every year, the MCAS question begins with, "From a work of literature that you have read, either in or out of school, please answer the following prompt." And then, whatever the prompt is, if you know a book well and you feel comfortable with that book, you should be able to replicate what you've been doing for the last ten years in school, having read books and authors, and to show evidence of your deeper thinking. And I think it's, just like every other school I've worked in, kids go to that test prepared with a book and feeling comfortable and knowledgeable. Then those scores go up. But I do have to say that having a reading teacher now on the staff at the high school has made a huge difference. Amanda Rowley is a wonderful resource, and she does what best practice suggests. She goes into the classrooms. As we've been working with the teachers setting their goals for the new teacher evaluation, her goal is to increase the literacy work she has done in several more contents, as you were just speaking of, math, reading, and writing responses. And she also has, I've shared that that's her goal with several teachers. And now their goal is to become more expert at initiating those goals in their history classes, in science, in social studies. So I'm sure that all of that comes together to have those scores.
And I would also add to that, the work that is done every summer at the BCC Summer Academy, where this year, we had over seventy students attend.
Seventy?
Seventy, seven-zero. And it clearly put all of the high school students that attended back in a position to graduate and earn credits, especially for some of the students who were most at risk. But they will walk in four years, which is a major accomplishment for them. And I am concerned about the BC Summer Academy. That is grant-funded. And I am concerned about the B C Summer Academy, that is grant-funded, but every year that money gets a little bit smaller and a little bit smaller. And that would be a huge loss to the district. And actually, I've already spoken to Mr. Simonello. I would really like to see something in the summer extend to seventh graders as well, especially the most at-risk ones that we're seeing.
Eric, did you have a question?
No, it was actually just a summation pretty much, I can finish your book.
And then also, last year, this group of students, my 10th graders from last year, had the opportunity to take the PSAT test in October. We gave it to all sophomores and juniors, we're doing that again this year. And so that was yet another opportunity for them to practice and have a look at a standardized test. So those are the things that I feel helped the most in raising the ELA scores last year. When we look at math, the math scores, I think, a little bit flat. We continue to see that chunk of students is scoring in the advanced category at forty-seven percent. I attribute a great deal of that to the offering of algebra to some students in grade eight. When students have algebra in grade eight, that means when they come to grade nine, they take geometry, so that by the time they take the MCAS test, they have geometry under their belt. The two areas of weakness we see when we look at the scores of our math students are in the area of geometry and number sense. So that algebra in grade eight is clearly an advantage. One of the things I would like to do is to work with Mr. Simonello on what happens to the other kids, what kind of math are they doing in eighth grade? And what can we do to make them better prepared for high school, so that they do have the same advantage as the students who take the algebra in grade eight. Once again, these students are also students who have attended the BCC Summer Academy, so that is a huge part of our success with the MCAS scores. When we look at science, we do see a slight increase in the failure rate. What I do want to point out in science, though, is the twenty-two percent that you see as needs improvement, they are actually passing. Because in science, the score to pass is two-twenty, it's not like ELA and math where you have to have the two-forty. So we actually have an eighty-nine percent passing rate in science. And the eleven percent, one of the concerns I've had, and I have had for the last two years, is that due to some reductions, we do not, science does not have the support of a special educator in the classroom, which we have always had in the science classroom. So where you see our failing scores were as low as seven percent at one point, and now I'm just beginning to see them creep up a little bit, and that does concern me. So that is something that I would like to take a closer look at if the opportunity ever came up. What could we do to support those students in science?
So we had a sped, a teacher-
In the class?
A teacher in the class, and that person's gone.
Correct.
And the teacher and the person leaves, and then the kids start to do bad again. Wow, that's a, I figured that out all by myself.
It's that additional support. But what I think everyone needs to focus on, I know we'd all like the scores to be high across the district. But I think what everyone needs to understand is ultimately, by the time students reach grade ten, they do do okay on the MCAS. So I've just included a student that we look at from grade four in ELA, and he would be very representative of the other students. If you look at where he started in grade four, he was at two-twenty, you know, two-thirty, two-twenty-six, two-twenty. But in the end, grade ten, two-fifty-two, he's proficient in math. But he is also a student who has taken advantage of that BCC Summer Academy every single summer that it's been offered. So I do think for him, that has truly paid off. Same thing, this is the same student in math. Not as strong in math, but ultimately, grade ten, he gets the NI, the Needs Improvement, the two-twenty. And what that means for any student is that we then write what we call an educational proficiency plan for that student. And as long as he follows that plan, which in his case would include continue to take math courses and continue to take the retest every year, that he would still get a high school diploma, that two-twenty does not prevent him from getting a diploma. He just needs to make sure he follows through on his EPP plan. As far as the school improvement goals, once again, after looking at the data this summer, our plan is to work in ELA. In ELA, we noticed that the gap is more with special education students than regular education students. So we're going to focus on that in ELA and science. In math, interestingly enough, the gap is more with regular ed students and not with special education students. So that's something that we're working on. Going to continue to work on the common assessments in every department, because those are performance-based tasks. And once again, they are good practice for students in preparation for MCAS or any of the other advanced tests they're taking. In the area of school climate, we are working with the Massachusetts Association of School Counselors. All of the counselors have been involved. We have come up with a curriculum based on their recommendations. And so part of that plan is to increase the four-year graduation rate for special education students by three percent. Because once again, that's where we see a gap in our graduation rate is with our students with IEPs not finishing in four years. Many of them finish in five years, but it's measured on a four-year graduation rate. Also this year, with school climate, we have launched our formal advisory program. Group of teachers worked on that with Mrs. Antonelli, developed a curriculum. And we had our first session in September, and we have our next session next month. And we surveyed the teachers after session one, and the feedback has been very positive.
Eric?
Tony actually said it, there was a common thread going through all this, the extra help in the classroom. One other question with the MCAS scores, are portfolios represented in all of this?
No. The alt portfolios? No, they're not.
I have, I have a question. How is it that the state can take a student who is in a residential placement that we aren't even teaching and put them, hold us accountable for their scores?
That would be a regulatory and legislative decision that they made years ago, when they basically say that because we are responsible programmatically and financially for those students, we're also, should be responsible for their performance. And basically, it's a way of them saying, we're spending public funding in settings that may or may not be public. Some of them, many of them happen to be private schools. And our only carrot is to have something like an MCAS or an alt assessment in most cases. Some of them do take the MCAS. But the problem is, we have very little control over what they experience in those settings. If we find that the curriculum that they're being exposed to and the the educational experience that they have available in those settings, we feel is not appropriate. Our responsibility is to then declare it so. And it unfortunately puts us in a conflict, usually with parents or that school, where the school would probably say, no, we have a great program. And the only way to resolve that conflict usually is unless we can convince the parent to bring the student back voluntarily, would be to take basically the parent court saying, no, we have an appropriate program for them here, and we want the courts to decide to send them back to us. So we have very little leverage, other than court proceedings that may be expensive in and of themselves. So, you know, that goes back to when they set up these out-of-district residential-type or day program regulations.
Doesn't seem quite fair. Tony?
Shell that, BCC grant, how much is that?
It's around, that was around nineteen thousand?
Twenty. It's becoming more competitive, so it's one of those concerns that we have, that if the grant goes, we won't be able to provide it.
Michael?
My first question, we can connect with the previous question. The applications, how do you choose the twenty who are going to be enrolled in the program? Who makes that choice?
No, no, no.
The grant requires that they be at risk of failing the MCAS or have a history of failing the MCAS. So we have to look at their MCAS scores. So if I have a student in ninth or 10th grade who failed the MCAS or was a low-needs improvement the last time they took it, then that's how they get selected and invited. Or a student, Mr. Simonello mentioned students moving in, if they come from a state or a private school where they have never taken the MCAS, they're also eligible for that program.
So financial, there's no financial requirement? Great. And as I heard your presentation, I noticed there was a fair amount of emphasis on the goal of achievement for special education students and those to pass the MCAS. My particular concern is the longer, broader goal of how we have done comparatively with other districts. First worthy of mention is, as we know, we have a tremendous population that transfers out of the system. So we have a population at the middle school which changes when it gets to the high school. And I was actually pleased that the relationship between the achievement levels at the middle school and up at the high school are somewhat comparative. There's, you know, on a broader scale, I see reasons why we've committed certain pieces of budget to certain type curriculums. But it starts to make sense. But when I step back and I look at all of the districts and see where we fit percentage-wise, I recognize that the certain populations need certain custom goals, such as the program at BCC to bring up to the minimum level of achievement. But I also see that the scores, because what's compared is basically the average score, I believe. When you look at the percentage of, well, we did it as a district, it's an average of all populations that took the test. I would see that some goals would be, and certainly I know there's other goals in here, but highlighting achievement throughout the entire population. And I would hope that we'd continue to see some of our limitations in terms of achievement level in all of the colors represented, whether it be proficient or the higher grade. Is what I'd like to see, a shift of all of the brackets moving to the right. And I think we all share that.
They have in English. They've all moved. So we're getting there.
Anything else, Tony?
Yeah, I'd like to direct our public relations officer and argue.
I think that means-
This high school, no, she doesn't, no, no. This ELH chart, I mean, that's something we need to get out to the paper, so people can see that. There are good things going on.
She wrote it down.
Oh, yeah, we need to send her the actual chart. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, that's the improvement in, just as we're speaking on the ELA, that's the improvement in where we were to where we are today. Correct?
Yeah.
And so that's certainly worthy of celebration. We still want to step back and look at the broader scale on where we achieved in comparison to the entire state. And I think that's still the goal that we have yet to achieve across the spectrum. So I just want to reemphasize that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say, thank you.
Thanks.
They should? Well, they have to test into it. They have to test into it. Is there any motions on the school improvement, school improvement plans that we have had in front of us today? Do you guys want to take them individually?
I wasn't here for the presentation.
I'll move to accept the four school improvement plans.
Hold on a second. Is there any discussion on those?
Yes.
Michael?
I would like to see an addendum and perhaps a friendly motion indicating the author of the school improvement plan. I don't know if that's customary throughout other districts, but a lot of work goes into the process. It starts with school council members, who, this draft is coming from the principals, based on work that a team has put forward. And I believe that it may make sense to document that work, you know, in the report. It doesn't indicate authorship, so.
Is that possible to-
Entirely-
At least direct, I mean, who create, even if it's not the individual people, perhaps the committee? Would you like to-
It was a motion, it was a request for an amendment to a motion.
You made, you made the motion.
You made the motion.
No, Mike, no, you made the other motion.
Tony made it. I mean, we don't have that here in front of us, so I mean, if they want to get that towards, that'd be great. What we have is what's in front of us right now. Now, let's approve what we have.
And add a cover sheet of authors.
Yeah, they can bring a cover sheet to us and we can-
Or the process, so you can see the process, who's put their fingers in on it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, on to the proposed superintendent's goals.
Well, I'm writing myself a note to do it in admin meeting.
Karen was there, but she left, she wasn't feeling well.
Okay. I think a lot of people have heard about the new educator evaluation process that the state is asking all districts to undertake. For those districts that are part of the race-to-the-top grant funding, this process is to be implemented this year. And one of the big shifts that this creates is a specific timeline for people to follow, from the superintendent on down, to put together a self-evaluation, taking a look at data from prior years or your evaluations from previous years. And then at the same time, come up with some proposed goals that then get discussed between the evaluator and the person being evaluated. And from there comes a, an action plan that can be put into place over the course of the year. You collect some data, somewhere in the middle of the year, you have a review of how we're doing to meet those goals that you've proposed, or any other issues that may come up at that time. And then you collect some more data in the spring, and hopefully by the end of the year, you have a summative assessment of that person's performance, including the goals and what the person has done in terms of their professional practice. And the state developed a huge rubric, I think for superintendents, like forty-four elements in it, broken down into forty-four elements, four different distinct areas. And basically, I was trying to be kind of ahead of the curve in putting in front of you proposed goals. And they're just proposed because it's supposed to be a discussion between whoever's doing the evaluation and whoever is being evaluated, usually in schools or, you know, it's either one-to-one, or it's one evaluator, or working with a teacher or a group of teachers. Here, it's a group of evaluators working with one person.
I'd just make it serious, we just had the meeting on it tonight, and there's actually sixty-five different areas. I think we should just table this matter, because we have to have a, sit down with Dr. Colley and come where we want to evaluate him, at where he wants to be evaluated at. So this right now, it's good information, but this is not what it's going to look like.
May I?
Go ahead.
I understand that. Part of the reason why I proposed the goals now is because I should propose the goals by October first, based on the timeline. Obviously, this is new for everybody, across the whole state. We're trying to, we've worked with the teachers, obviously, they've had a lot more training than you have. We had two days before school started, part of the convocation was based on this. And we've had the principals work with the teachers during either grade-level meetings or during their faculty meetings. So they've got a leg up, so we understand that.
So they've got a leg up, so we understand that. I just wanted you to see more or less the process working out, and I'd be more than happy to do that. You do have the district improvement plan, which basically talks a little bit about what happened last year, what we've accomplished. Take a look at the goals. Most of them come right out of the district improvement plan, and by all means, we can talk about it. I know in the meeting we just had prior to this, there was a little bit of a presentation to the school committee. And some of the school committee members, especially the chair, has gone to more meetings because it was required through RTT to do that, so she may know a bit more than anybody else. But it is a big process and it is a change of philosophy in some ways and not in others. We always were looking at goals and goal setting and goal achievement, but this one not only does that, but it also gives you a rubric to take a look at that's been used across the whole state. It used to be each district kind of had their own rubric for the superintendent, their own process. This may standardize it a little bit. I'd be more than happy to let you take the information, look at it, and then we can come back to it.
Again, I agree with Eric's comment about tabling this matter. Certainly, we have FY12 to finish up. From that evaluation, we'll yield some goals. And while I am hearing that there's a time constraint with what the state's put out there, we will take that under advisement as I would support tabling this matter.
Carolina?
If you haven't already, could you provide us with that timetable?
It's in your packet.
He did.
The packet we have.
He did provide it.
Oh.
The timelines.
Earlier meeting.
Mr. Kutter. Also has a timetable in his book also.
Yeah, they're all the same. They come right from the state.
So there's a timetable?
Yeah, there is.
And the timetable is set up so that it sort of keeps us on track, so we're not running around at the last minute trying to get 18 steps done that it was a process for?
The state, just as a point of information, the state did spend a lot of time working on this process and the timetable. It's mostly directed at teachers and it envisions that many teachers will have two years in that timeline, especially those who've been here for a while, professional status teachers. Whereas newer teachers would go into that timeline for just one year. They've recommended that principals and administrators be on that one-year cycle as well. It's, you know, we still, even at the administrative level, superintendents, associations, and principal associations are still asking questions that this may, if you follow the timeline, it may change the way or the timing of how evaluations have been done in the past for superintendents and principals. And there may even be some conflicts with contractual language that was already agreed to. You know, like you'll evaluate somebody by such and such a date, whereas this timeline doesn't look at that. It was directed at teachers. So when you look at the timeline, think about it from a teacher's point of view, that they come in in September and they leave in June, so the timeline's only looking at that, whereas administrators work 12 months. So the timeline could be adjusted, but for now, this is what the state is providing as guidance.
Tony?
Back to Eric's point about the evaluations. Yeah, it's true that we need to decide on those points that we are going to do the evaluation, but part of, aside from those points, his goals are, you know, are part of that evaluation. So I mean, whether he gives it, I mean, his goals are going to be his goals. I don't see why.
But they may not be the discussion goals.
Michelle?
Michael?
I was going to continue the discussion. If we're going to have the discussion on goals tonight, then we should continue it. But what I wanted to add is, we come up with the superintendent's goals. We don't just ask for goals from the superintendent. This is a format. We're hearing that we're behind in a timeline for FY13. We have yet to meet and evaluate FY12. I would urge that we focus, as I brought up in the past, on the FY12 evaluation process. It has nothing to do with this evaluation procedure, which I read this summer. I mean, it's been online this summer. And I recognize that we didn't meet the timeline. I'm concerned that we did not meet the timeline. I'm also concerned that on these goals, in no way is there any indication of a business, the business part of the superintendent's responsibilities. And so these are, these are goals for the district. I think we have to take a hard look at goals to achieve under the rules of the business management piece, and I don't see any here. So we can accept this outline as Dr. Colley's input, but certainly not as, I thought it was premature to discuss it, let alone continue the discussion, but that's my input relative to having only found out an hour ago that the, a couple hours ago, that the workshop that was scheduled for today about evaluations covered FY13, not FY12. My, I'm anxious to get FY12 underway and goals will result from that. That would make sense to be on this as well.
Carolina?
I believe after the workshop, my impression was that it's a give-and-take process, that it's a discussion that we have. The superintendent is submitting a draft and it's called draft sample proposed goals. It's, to start the discussion is what I'm reading this as. It's not the definitive final list. It's, here is what I see, let's start the discussion. This is what I'm looking at right now. And at the end of the day, it may look very different. I'm guessing it will include some of the things on this list. It may not include all of them. It may add many of them. I'm seeing that the first thing is develop a budget, which I see as a business officer's operation, so I think at least one point is dealing with business. But this, to me, is a starting point, not an ending point. And this is just, let's start the discussion. So I think that we should accept the draft as the opening of the door to this entire process, which is going to take more than one meeting. We're not going to be able to come up with the goals in one meeting. It's going to be a give-and-take. I don't see this as we, we, the school committee, establishing 18 goals and saying, here, go do that. I think it is a give-and-take process. At least, that's the way I see it.
So we just accept it, not have a presentation, not just accept it? Now we formulate it and?
Right, exactly. Absolutely. I read the word draft as it's written, draft.
Just hand it, like, giving it to us and no discussion on it? We'll sit with them and go over it.
Michael, you had your hand up.
Yeah, again, I stand by my support of the, I don't know if it was a motion or not.
No.
I know we tend to have, is this on the action items? Is that?
It is.
Yes.
So we've had a kind of a concept motion thrown out there. We're continuing discussion. So the discussion is that this is a step that takes place after you finish the FY12 evaluation that yields goals. I haven't had any conversations and so I don't really believe that goals could be appropriately put forward without knowing the FY12 results. Results being of our evaluation of the superintendent of FY12. I don't know how anyone could make a list of goals without using that as the foundation for putting this together, unless there's a concern for meeting a state timeline that apparently we're close to missing. Maybe that's going to be a new goal, that we best stop meeting timelines. This is inappropriate that it's coming out this evening before we finish the evaluation.
Madam Chair? As a suggestion, I know last year, we did, the superintendent's evaluation was finished right around February. A new contract that started this year was signed at around that time as well. And if you review the section on evaluations, it does clearly speak that we would be looking to use whatever the state, which at that time hadn't all been published, that we would agree to at least talk about the process that the state was going to put forth, because they had already talked about it in conceptual stages through the RTT process, that it would be, you know, one of the things we would look at to do for the next round of evaluations for the superintendent. There is language in the superintendent's contract that says that we can mutually agree to move those timelines up, down, sideways. But that would be part of why I'm bringing this up now, because we did talk about it during contract, you know, when the contract for myself was put together, that we would use whatever the state came up with, with some modifications. Like I said, everybody's across the state is running into this issue of how do, how does a process that the state put in place after many superintendent's contracts have been put together, how do you blend the two things together? And I think it would lead to a discussion, so.
And I think at this point, the intention of anything on the action agenda was not to make any final decisions on any evaluation or evaluation tool. I see your hand. It's more just to simply open the discussion, open the evaluation process, open the fact that we are starting, we're going to be discussing. I actually, I think, you know, like a couple of others have said, maybe this is a starting point and then we go from there. Maybe we delete, maybe we add. I know I saw a lot of items on that, you know, that we, some that we are required to put in, some that we might want to add, some that we personally might feel are goals for you. So, I mean, nothing was, no intention of necessarily meeting a deadline, but more open discussion and make sure that everyone understands that it's the beginning process. And it is a change for all of us. This is new to everybody, teachers all the way on up for every district in Massachusetts. So, and it sounds like MASC has also been busy going to different communities as well, trying to help people through the process, which, you know, is different. Michael?
Yes, once again, yes, it's a new process and throughout all levels of the system, there's been no agreements even how the process is going to be followed. I'd like to postpone starting a new process. I am not in favor of making any revisions to the evaluation process we have to only then change it to what the state finally comes up with, if this in fact is what they come up with. The new evaluation process is to evaluate FY13, okay? We're behind on FY12. It doesn't make sense to start a process when we haven't finished. Otherwise, it's roughly analogous to a social promotion for the superintendent.
Can, Caroline? Can I ask for clarification? I'm sorry, I didn't join the board until April. That was after you had, I assume, done an evaluation and renewed a contract based?
Two years prior.
On an evaluation. And at that point, which was, I'm hearing, February, I mean, what's the normal plan and process? I'm sitting, can I finish?
Well, you asked for clarification. I can clarify.
I haven't finished my point.
What do you want clarified?
I haven't finished my point.
You said you wanted clarification. Is it a point or is it clarification?
I didn't finish one.
Are you done?
I thought you were asking me to clarify something and you're losing me with your point.
I wasn't asking you personally. Can I finish, please? I think you've had enough airtime since you walked in the room.
To clarify. I thought it was me, I'm sorry.
I don't know what the intent was at the end of the signing of that contract. I'm listening to, I haven't seen the contract. I'm listening that there was a provision in there referencing this particular evaluation process that has been generated by the state. And I'm just, I don't know what the timeline, fiscal 20, FY12 versus FY13. What was the intent of when a new evaluation after that contract got signed in February should have been versus what we're doing now? Michelle, I don't know, can you, I wasn't here for the last go-round of evaluations and contract negotiations and all that stuff.
The evaluation process went, was done in?
I did not get an evaluation until last year.
To clarify, last year, we missed a deadline that was in the previous contract for an appropriate evaluation. So that's why two weeks ago, I sent an email to the chairperson and said, what's the delay in the FY12 evaluation?
Honestly, if you, I don't remember seeing FY12. I just saw the word evaluation. I don't know, maybe it did say FY12. If it did, I actually missed, I saw the evaluation. Now, to clarify your response, my assumption is that you were talking about this evaluation because this is where we're moving forward. Hence, I contacted MASC.
We're not, there's no delay in this.
Michael, I contacted MASC because you made a request to have some training done?
Absolutely not.
That's what my interpretation of that was.
Okay, if I can respond, because you said I said something, no. You came to us and said you had gone to all these workshops on evaluations and you would come back. Okay, that was last spring on this new evaluation system.
Went in March.
I expected that we would then begin the process. I emailed you in the past two weeks saying, what is the delay on the evaluation?
You have it in front of you though now, Michael.
This is FY13. I'm not, there's no delay.
We finished, that one's done. We did that.
In front of me is the draft sample of FY13 goals. We haven't touched FY12's evaluation.
Go ahead.
I'm just reading the contract and the contract says, "The committee shall evaluate and assess in writing the superintendent's performance at least once each contract year during the term of this agreement by no later than February 15th." I read that to be February 15th, 2013, since this was signed in 2012. We're in September? How have we missed the deadline? When this is saying February?
The deadline we missed is October for saying that he gave us this. The new process for FY13, we just heard, has an October deadline.
No.
No, his goals.
Correct.
His submission.
This is the first step.
Yes.
Right, and as a deadline.
So we haven't missed anything. It's, these are, these are agreed upon.
I'm just saying what I was referring to, a comment by the superintendent that there was concern with the deadline of October something, that the state says he has to give us goals by then.
And that's what this is.
So.
He's providing us with what he's suggested.
I'm not ready to accept goals on a new year when we haven't solidified the goals from FY12. We haven't even started the process. February was considered late by the old contract. I don't know if that's saying, you're reading a contract for FY13. You just read from a contract that starts for FY13, correct?
That's the contract that's in effect now.
But the evaluation is for the previous contract.
I can't address what didn't happen in the past. I can only address what's going now and forward.
What didn't, FY12 is the current year. The contract that applies to FY12 is the old contract. It was a different date, I believe, because we missed a deadline. And so maybe they shifted that, that date. But to answer the question, it was very clear from the start that the evaluation process in the past three years has been a long process.
I actually think I understand what you're saying.
And it starts by now. We've moved the deadline to February, but we can't start with goals until we finish our accomplishments and what new direction may come about. I don't see how we can start a new process.
I actually, I think I understand what you're saying because our timelines are now changing. They were February, but now they're being adjusted, so the goals moving forward, the stuff that's, because honestly.
The February date was not in the old contract. The old contract had December. We missed it by two months.
December 31st was our contract.
We missed it. So the contract was changed, new date, and it's very clear that someone's read the contract. Here, we are starting a new process and we've got a void.
Please don't, don't shoot, don't, you don't need to fire at people, Michael.
I'm not firing at anyone. I'm asking that we start. I'm not firing at anyone, I'm asking that we start the FY12 evaluation process. My request hasn't changed from two weeks ago.
What, what is it that everybody wants to do? Because at this point, we're just spinning wheels. So, is, is, do we want to table this, or, go ahead?
Mike White, the new process, Mike, these dates have, you're combining two things. If we got a deadline for FY13, well, he's given of, he's given us his goals, we accept him, he's, he's made the deadline. And whether we actually use those goals, I mean, that's for another day. And why can't we use the current evaluation system, which is what we talked about a couple of hours ago, to evaluate him la, for, you know, his last year's evaluation? What school district in the state has already evaluated the superintendent in September for last year? They, they did it over the summer? Did they do it over the summer?
More than half.
More than half, okay.
The, the process should have begun. We, we've changed dates on the contract with the superintendent in terms of when he's evaluated. For three years, we missed a deadline that was in the contract previously. So I've asked that this gets started. We're delaying the FY12 evaluation. I am not in favor of also bringing on a new process now. We're just learning about a new process. Let's start with the evaluation process that has been tweaked over the past three years. It's been changed, and last year was a good format. It actually lines up quite a bit with this new system we're going to go into, and I'm ready to, to start the FY12 evaluation process before I can even consider goals for FY13. Am I saying February? No. I think we should be able to get through an evaluation process in the matter of a month for FY12.
All I can say to that is these goals aren't set and stowed.
If we're-
I, I know what you're saying, I got it. I have the same concern.
Is there a motion, is there a motion on this, or are we tabling this?
Make a motion to table the matter until-
Is there a second?
... completion of the FY12.
All second, just because we have so much confusion on it. I think we need to-
No, it's okay.
Don't do anything, just table it and move on.
I understand. Is there discussion on that?
Well, again, I, apparently my, my email correspondence-
A new discussion? Is it a new discussion?
Yes. Regarding the confusion, the confusion that, this is the new discussion, because the second of the motion mentioned confusion. The confusion apparently was which evaluation I was talking about, and, and apparently I triggered FY13's being on the agenda tonight. I know, I would have been happy to discuss that, but no, FY12 should have been on the agenda, and we should be beginning that immediately.
I act, believe it or not, I actually do understand what you're talking about. Shocking, I know.
We'll get that on, we'll, we'll, I, I want to get it going too, I believe. We'll get on the, next go.
Regardless of, I think I, I understand where you're going with FY12. There was a portion of time that was missed in there, and I understand that's what you're saying, and I actually agree with you. However, moving forward on that, point taken, because I understand, I'd also, I also think I'd like to at least accept, in, in his draft form, what he has submitted to us personally. I'm not prepared to table what he submitted. I'm not saying we accept, we agree to it, I'm just saying, you know, I would agree to accept it, so that in my mind, I can also start to formulate where we want to be for FY13 as well. Eric?
Just to touch a little on Mike's, what Mike's saying. I don't have a problem accepting his 13 goals, but those goals, when he sits down with us in a meeting, are formulated because of the 12 evaluation. If we have a 12 evaluation completed, we sit there and say, "Okay, you need help in this area, in this area, in this area." Our goals for 13 are based on 12's evaluation.
Right, I understand.
And then they will change.
And they change. So if we do accept this to meet the timeline of October 1st, that's fine, but there has to be a footnote saying, "This is fluid, it's going to change. When we get the 12 done, we're going to reformulate new goals."
May I just throw a couple of things in here? I think the other part of the confusion comes in when the state throws into the middle of a process that's already running, a, a regulation, where the regulation tells you, you don't have options in some areas, you have to follow the regulation. And, and I'm not sure, but when you look at the district improvement plan, in every goal from past years, I put in a statement of where I think we went. So there is some amount of self-evaluation that I had to do, even to put together the goals of FY13. I, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I may totally have missed this. If the evaluation for the superintendent was done in the middle of last year, are you going to evaluate me on the end of, just February to June? Is that what you're thinking of? I just was wondering.
You're asking me?
I'm asking the committee as whole.
And I think that's where the, I do think that's where the confusion comes in, because it's for a partial year.
No.
It's actually the school year of September, because when we evaluate, you sit at this table-
It is the school year.
There was a lot of things we did not consider that happened after July 11th, July 11th-
Hold on one second.
That we didn't bring into the evaluation.
Michael, one at a time, please. What I'm meaning by partial school year is when an evaluation process is completed and the deadline was December 31st, point taken, because I was thinking the contract, my mistake. So the insult of someone actually read the contract was unnecessary. What I'm saying to that is that when you create an evaluation process, and I actually remember talking about this in the evaluation, how do we, how do we set goals for somebody when we're already midway through the year, meaning December? Can I, I see your hand, just let me finish. We're already midway through the year into December, trying to set goals for somebody who's three, four months into the process seems kind of odd to me. And I remember discussing that and saying, "We're, we're in December, we're going to set goals for January through July," that's kind of weird. This should maybe be done in the summer and into September, and at the same time, the new evaluation procedure and process was coming into play. So, I think this is where the confusion is coming in, where, to me, it's more, makes more sense with this new evaluation process to sit down in September and say, "These are your goals for the rest of the year," or in the, this timeframe, "These are your goals that you're going to be working on," instead of doing that in December, which is how the process was. So when I say halfway through the school year, that's what I meant, setting a goal, you know, by December 31st and saying, "Achieve that by July," in, in essence, you're kind of, sort of saying, into, you're also going into the following school year by doing that into the September year after the evaluation, giving somebody a year to actually complete what you've asked them to do.
And that is-
More changes.
I understand that too, Michael.
That hand was up.
Yes, it was. I saw it.
So thank you for recognizing me. As I return to my point, and, and I, I just want to reference the term confusion that, that, the confusion started with an email that was titled Superintendent Evaluation. I thought we were all aware that the FY12 evaluation is the one we have to get started on, because as you've pointed out, it's important not to wait till February. We've known that for the past three years, but it's continued to be a problem. This summer, it was on my agenda list of things to try to, which I have a very long list of items, that is one of many items. This FY13 process is for FY13. It's, it's from July on. When we did the FY11 evaluation, we were very careful and clear to evaluate for a period that stopped on July 1st, 2012. 11. FY, FY, that was for the FY11, ended on July 2011. And so the evaluation, to answer your question of, of this midway year, I am not confused about it. You evaluate based on the fiscal year, because that's where the contract is, and that's what we've always done. We're behind on that. February doesn't work, even though that's our, we, we pushed that date forward. Clearly, it doesn't work with the new timeline for next year, but let's, let's not rush into next year until we complete this year's process. I urge fellow school committee members to be committed to the FY12 superintendent evaluation. I've asked it to be put on the agenda. Apparently, I, there was some confusion on, on agenda setting. I was not able to attend the workshop. There's a lot of information I have to look at, and, and so the FY13 process is, is new. The, the current policy of superintendent evaluation, which is in place, unless it was changed tonight, but it's in place in a manu, policy manual. We have a roadmap, we have forms, let's get going on it.
Is there any more discussion on Michael's motion to table? Seeing none, all those in favor of tabling this until a further date?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
No. Only because, and I will just state, I, I have no problems working forward, but I would like to at least accept this as a draft, not accept it as what we're doing, but accept it, that he's given it to us, sort of as saying, "Yes, we've gotten your, your rec, your, your proposed goals." I'm not accepting them necessarily, but-
Which did.
No, we didn't do anything yet.
We didn't do anything yet.
So it-
No, accepting them as, "Here are my goals," not accepting them as being what I will approve, if that makes any sense. Accepting them as him, as saying, "You've given, yes, you've given, I accept this piece of paper saying that you've given me your goals, and we'll take a look at them and adjust." Michael?
Okay, so we're opening up the conversation on, on the paper that's in front of us. We've heard about a deadline of October, I think he said 9th.
October 1st.
I don't know, I just cut the packet, so I, if you could help me out.
You actually got the packet several days ago. Which packet?
The wor, whatever the workshop packet.
Well, I'm not referring, this isn't the workshop packet.
So, we accepting that also?
No, this is the timeline, which you were sent.
And what's, what's it say for October 1st?
"Evaluator meets with his first-year educators to assist in self-assessment and goal-setting process. Educator submits self-assessment and proposed goals," that's all, by October 1st.
So, if we meet, if we don't meet the October 1st deadline, which seems to be inherent in our approving a draft to start a discussion, it appears that we're not going to have any discussion on the goals. The state has a, a first step there, October 1st, on a brand-new evaluation process.
That's what this is.
And, and nowhere does, does that indicate to me that a response to the state, that we're behind, we're working on 2012's evaluation, so we're not able to start our goal process, because that, that doesn't say that October 1st is the deadline for accepting a draft. It doesn't say that, but we're now s-
It says proposed.
Educator proposes.
Right, educator submits, which would be Dr. Colley submitting.
Right.
See, I think the confusion is, is, is in, we're actually working on two different evaluations at the same time.
I'm not confused.
In the sense, no, but we are, Michael.
I'm not confused.
I'm not saying you are, but the confusion in the process is, we're beginning, normally the procedure of, 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 we wouldn't be looking at 13 until the end of the year, typically. It would be next year, we'd be looking at 13 stuff.
The end of the year, or?
Well, because you've gone through, because you've gone through the year, whereas now, because we're in a process of switching over to two different things, we're working on 12 and working on 13, sort of at the same time, in some respects. Because this is the beginning of one process, yet it's the end of another process. We've never had the beginning of a process, because there was no process that started with setting like this. It was just the end of your evaluation. So, in essence, the beginning of, it's because of the process being changed. That's, I think, where, and I understand you're not confused, but this is where my confusion initially was, in understanding what you were trying to explain. And it's just because one process is ending, and a new process is beginning, the new process has a starting point that we never had before, so we now, we're not actually completing an evaluation for FY13, we're starting the goals. I would just like to approve these while we work on 12, and-
Can you do me one favor, look, can you read that statement again? Because we were supposed to have a meeting before we accept the October 1st. Say the first two lines again.
"Evaluator meets with first-year educators."
We haven't had that meet.
First-year educators?
I'm, I'm not suggesting, I mean, and I don't think, you know what, whatever you guys want. I'm one person, I understand.
Is, is accepting this proposal going to change anybody's evaluation? No. We're talking two different things, Mike.
It says we have to have a meeting to discuss it. If we're going to have a discussion tonight-
And I, and I agree with you.
I guess we will.
We need to have a discussion.
They're going to change.
We need to have a meeting to discuss it. We talked about that today.
May I give a little bit more background based on the timeline from the state? The state envisions that each educator puts out goals and works with whoever their evaluator is, between the beginning of the month in October, hopefully before that, and then into the middle of the month of October, to talk about what the plan's supposed to be. The plan for improvement for that person would include things like the self-evaluation, prior evaluations, all those things rolled up into it. And then as part of that educator plan, you work on the goals, but that plan's not meant to be completed all the way till November 1st. So we have some time. I was just trying to get the ball rolling by proposing some goals, just so that you would have a place to start, just like we did the district improvement plan, that's a place to start. You can look at the last evaluation done of the superintendent, that's a place to start. And then, you know, maybe in the middle of next month, which is October, we meet again on the 10th, have another discussion, gives you time to look at all the, the goals that I proposed, the goals that are in the district improvement plan, the last evaluation, you can look at the rubric that the states put out for superintendents, and begin to say, "Okay, we like some of these goals, we don't like them, let's change this, let's add that, let's take this out." We come back on the 10th, we discuss it for the, for this year, and we don't have to have that finished until probably November. So we have two meetings in October.
Michael, I think Michael-
Again, I, I, I'm not confused. I'm, I'm reading the statement, for October 1st, it, it, the evaluator meets with first-year educators, so that has nothing to do with this.
No.
The second line is, "The educator, the superintendent, submits a self-evaluation and proposed goals." This draft is a draft. So, is this proposed goals, or is it a draft? We don't even know that.
If you want to ask proposed goals, I'll scratch out draft and call them proposed goals. And if you look at the self-evaluation, take a look at the statements within the district improvement plan that talk about prior year achievements, areas where I feel we have a work to do. I also list-
Well, I wasn't asking. I was, I was speaking figuratively, in that clearly-
I thought it was a question.
My statement is regarding what the state has here, okay? The state has, and, and so I'm sharing with fellow members, the discussion is to accept a draft sample, not a list of proposed goals. So therefore, when I did get the packet last week, I looked at it as a sample. I didn't look at it as a list of proposed goals. So regardless, we've missed the October 1st, I shouldn't say we've missed, because October 1st is not here yet. So regardless, we've missed the October first, I shouldn't say we've missed, because October first is not here yet, but we do not have in front of us a document that says, this is my proposed goals. We have a document that softens that by saying, here's a draft sample, okay? Frankly, I didn't know if this was off a website of giving an example. I don't know where this came from. I'm not prepared to accept a draft sample as a list of proposed goals with scratching something out. I believe it's easily remedied with correspondence with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as far as if they ask why we didn't get the October first list of proposed goals. Part of the reason is we're working on the previous year. Secondly, it's because we don't have it in front of us this evening. We have a draft. We don't have a finalized proposed list, so...
Eric?
I understand we want to start thirteen, but we haven't done twelve. The problem I'm going to have with it, I've been through three or four evaluations already. It's hard enough to keep in mind your evaluation period for one year. If we're going to be doing dual, it's a huge project to do an evaluation. I really can't see evaluating properly, taking two avenues at the same time. You know, starting a thirteen process and still working on twelve, I really think we need to put to bed twelve before we even think of opening up thirteen, because it's hard enough doing one evaluation and being fair to us, the district and Dr. Colley, to do an evaluation properly. Us moving on two different tracks is going to be extremely unfair to everybody.
Carolina?
Being the newest member of the board and not having been involved in evaluations, it seems, from what I'm hearing, that the evaluations routinely haven't happened in a timely fashion.
They've happened at the end of the year, too.
I'm just listening to one of our members saying that for the past three years, the evaluations didn't happen when they were supposed to have happened. I don't know whether that's accurate or not, but that's what I've just heard. So I understand your point, Eric, with regard to having this dual thing, but starting the process where we now have a new system, a timeline that's attached to it, that has things that supposedly need to happen within certain timeframes, and having that off to the side, at least starting that process, so that a year from now, we're not having the same discussion.
Can we have that meeting? It's fine. I'm all fine, if you want us to follow that timeline, that's great, but let's have the meeting first that formulates those goals.
Here's last-
We need to have that meeting with him first to say, this is where we want you to work on.
Last year's evaluation was done in November and December, because now it's actually all coming back to me. It was actually done in November, completed in December. So it was done by the December thirty-first, and it was done in advance of what was required. The year prior was not, because I believe it was actually completed in February. And that's-
I don't think he was-
That's where my February is, that's where February's coming in, because there was another, it was somebody different. And that was a February evaluation that was completed, so that one, yes, was late. But, and I understand your point, but I think for this one year, we're going to be putting one to bed and creating one all at the same time, because this, if you look at this, the completion of this evaluation is no longer October, November, December, which was what your deadlines were, is now June, 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 and June for the last three items. So it appears to me for one year only, there's going to be some overlap. I don't know that we can help. And I can't imagine we're the only school committee, we can't be the only school committee that's going to be going through this overlap. But it has to do with the fact that one is going away and one is coming in.
But we don't have the October first deadline. That's a first-year educator.
I understand that.
We still need to have that meeting with them.
Oh, I understand. I agree with you, one hundred percent. I agree with you.
We don't need to accept this night, because we have to have that meeting and have that goal-setting together.
It is the proper way of doing it, is to meet together to set up those protocols. Mike, if it makes you feel any better, I was hoping to have a discussion about what proper goals would look like, what kind of things, based on the information you've gotten in the last few school committee meetings. These goals come right out of the district improvement plan. The ones that I've highlighted are four of the goals that I feel I need to work on. So because we put it in the action agenda, my goal was to put in front of you a list of proposed goals. Now that I would do all nine of them. Most people do four, maybe five at the most, goals. And I highlighted some of them, those why they're bold. One of them does have to do with finances, and one has to do with student improvement. There's a series of goals in there that you can pick and choose, modify, change, ask me to do things differently, maybe add some goals that are not even there. So if you, because we're in that discussion, I was hoping we could have that discussion here, rather than, you know, me just sending you a proposed set of goals that we've never talked about. I was thinking we could do it here. We could talk about, hey, district improvement plan shows us we have, we want to do exactly what you said when we were talking about improvement from the kids. We want to move all the kids, you know, into a higher category of learning. So if you look at the last goal, that's exactly what it's saying. Take all the kids MCAS and let's move them up. So I was hoping to have this as a discussion as to where we want to go this year. I'm sorry, I, you know, I missed the change in timelines. It just, we've been immersed in this process of trying to change to a new system since the spring when the state put this on. And yes, it's not as clear and simple as apply to the superintendent the same timeline that you do with teachers. I'm thinking, you know, whatever we do here or over the next few months to set this timeline or this process together, I'll probably be bringing it back to MASS, and they'll bring it together to the state, to DESI, to say, hey, maybe superintendents need to be a little different. Everybody's going through this process, and everybody's going through this, these discussions of how do we do this? So we're not any different than anybody else. And I've talked to other superintendents who are having the same discussions with their school committee meetings. I figured this would be a great opportunity to start that discussion.
Eric?
Exactly what I'm trying to say, that we need to have that discussion. We just got MCAS scores this week. We just got-
That's what I'm saying.
The principals explaining what they're going to do with them.
We may take more time.
We can't sit here and write down, have a discussion on what we want your goals to be, when I've just got the information tonight. If we want to have a dedicated school committee meeting next, in two weeks, just on this, I'm all for it, without having all the other stuff. And just do evaluations.
Michael?
I'd like, is there still a motion on the table?
There is nothing on the table right now.
So I'd like to make a motion that the school committee accepts the draft sample of superintendent-proposed FY thirteen goals dated September nineteenth as an example of the list of proposed goals. And to open up the discussion on establishing goals at a date certain. I think our next meeting.
Okay. I'm not as good as Karen. So you're going to need to, school committee accept draft?
Draft sample of superintendent proposed FY thirteen goals dated September nineteenth, twenty twelve, as an example of a list of proposed goals. And to schedule October when?
We're going to next meeting October.
Tenth.
October tenth.
To continue the discussion of the goals. October tenth.
You have that? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Michael's motion?
All right, let me just, so that I'm clear here. So we're accepting the draft sample of the superintendent's proposed FY thirteen goals. And then to have a meeting and discuss it at the next meeting.
Which is basically what I think, I, that's what I know, that was my intention.
And did you second it?
Yes, Eric seconded it.
Trying to help her.
Who's Waldicap there?
I guess Eric.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, I was, I-
Yes, it was. I think.
Yes, you did.
All right, give me a second, I gotta go back now. Discussion morning, do you guys want to table that, or? Yeah? No? You don't? Okay. All right.
What do we?
Discussion of morning and after-school programs.
It's, this came up twice now. Once during the budget discussions back in June, where we were trying to figure out ways to balance the budget. And one of the suggestions that had been made was to perhaps establish an after-school program at the MAC. I know Juliana Pacetto, the principal at the MAC, did a little bit of research on that. It came up again, you know, with the changes in the busing, where parents, some parents were like, you know, buses are coming in at a different time now to pick up the kids in the morning or to drop them off in the afternoon. And some parents were concerned that they had to go to work early. And we don't really have a before-school type program. We do have the CFC that has an after-school program that some parents have made access to. And I know one of the discussions with parents that were asking questions, could we do this? You know, somebody at one of the meetings, I know I jotted on the margin, that somebody wanted to have a discussion about it. What I can tell you is Juliana did a little bit of a study. I know that we could do this, it would take a little bit of time to put it together, because if it's not a school-sponsored childcare program, they have some flexibility as to what they do with their programs. If we do it as a school-sponsored program, whether it be before school or after school, then you get into some actual regulations that would take a little bit of doing to put together, so we can put a proposal before you. I just want to know if that is something you want us to pursue. I'll bring it back to the administrators, perhaps at the elementary and the MAC, because I'm assuming those would be the ages, although I could envision middle-school students, I know a bunch of them go to the library, so there may be some possibilities there, to provide some after-school care for parents that need it, and perhaps some early-school care for parents who want to drop off, have their kids perhaps mix it in with breakfast. And then the parents can go to work, the kids can stay, wait till it's time to go to the classrooms and go from wherever, the cafeteria, probably, something of that nature.
Eric?
If we did it as a breakfast program, where there might be some federal monies for early breakfast program, we don't have to fit those educational guidelines and just do it as a breakfast program?
You could do it. The only concern that I have with breakfast programs is, depending on the participation, you may not have enough funding to actually self-fund it. Whereas if you're doing it as a before-school care program, parents would have to sign up, pay a fee, which would hopefully pay for the people who are going to be there. And as part of that, you offer breakfast, which then, hopefully, that money can either go to paying for the people, providing breakfast, cooking it, serving it, or the people out there supervising the students that are waiting for the bell to ring to go to class.
So you can both work hand-in-hand?
Yeah.
I would like to see a proposal put forward with some numbers, and I would like to see possibly a survey sent out to the parents at the MAC and at the elementary school to see what kind of interest, if any, there would be in a morning program or an afternoon program, so that we could get a sense of numbers. If you're going to have ten people using this, I mean, I don't know that that would be cost-effective. If you're going to have a hundred people using it, then obviously, it would have some value to it.
My only, and it, we can do that. How would you like to handle the already-existing program, which is CFC in the afternoon? Not sure if we want to be in competition with them, but it is a question to raise at this point, before we even start putting out surveys.
Maybe we just address the morning program to begin with, and we deal with the breakfast, and we use that as, and then see how that goes, and then look at whether, if that's functioning well, there is an interest in potentially expanding. But that way, at least initially, we're only doing one thing, we're not doing two. We see whether we can get it up and running, if there's enough interest, and we're not stepping on anybody's toes initially, and then reevaluate it somewhere down the line to see whether there is interest in doing something else. You can always run an after-school program at the MAC versus at the West.
Michael?
I'm in favor of a breakfast program. I think it would take limited manpower with a box program. We could have a food service company deliver boxed breakfast, ready to go, and hand it out to, whether it be ten or fifty students. I would encourage breakfast program early. The other programs are working, they're in place, and for us to be looking to expand into anything outside the classroom is taking attention away. I I don't think it's the area that we should be getting involved in at this time.
Tony?
This came up last year as an additional way to raise some revenue, was to look at and see if, you know, we could do these programs ourselves and actually raise some money. So I mean, that's, I think that's what we all, at the time, agreed to have her look into it, was it was a way to make some money, see if we could do it ourselves.
Michael?
I think what we agreed on is that it was premature. The discussion was a very broad stretch at an idea without a financial proposal that, which I haven't, I'm not hearing that we're ready with that yet, but yes, at budget time, that was brought forward as a potential new source of revenue. There was not agreement, though, that we saw, we all saw it as a source of revenue. I personally don't see it as a source of revenue. I see it as watering down on our resources, but I could be convinced differently with proposals. But after-school programs are something that we don't specialize in. There are groups that do, that are already here. I don't know if we've contacted them to see if they can meet the needs of some of these parents that were, you know, stu- the students that have a need for after-school, that aren't eligible for some of the programs in place. I'm in favor of those programs expanding. And I think that's what I heard Dr. Colley say, that should we talk to those other programs? Yeah, that would be part of putting a proposal together. I would like to pursue the breakfast idea, concept. Early drop-off of the breakfast, I think, is great. You need some people in the building. I know you're not going to just open the doors and throw lunches around, but I don't think the food service staff is going to need to put a lot of energy into preparation. It's not going to, you know, a box program, you know, a box lunch.
I will make, I will make the suggestion of boxed breakfast. I don't know what that will look like, but we'll make the suggestion. I'll put Michelle to work on the lunch, on the breakfast piece, and I'll have the principals work on, you know, I'll work with them on the before-school care, because depending how many people wish to participate, you may need some bodies, just logistics.
Eric?
It was probably two or three years ago, I remember Lee's Market approaching us about having, they were going to have a bin in their store where you could buy a brown bag. It was a made lunch, whatever it came out to. I don't know whatever happened to it. They proposed it, like they were going to have a, but it never went anywhere, I don't think. Mike, you were, I think you were on it that time. Remember Lee's talking about a, they were going to have a, one cooler in their store- where you could just drive by and at a moment's notice grab one bag, it's full lunch, and just brown bag lunch. Something like the dollar store, you buy that little, little brown bags, boy or girl, same type of thing. Hammer chicken, grab a bag, you're out the door. Where they may be able to part, we have partnerships in education with our improvement plan, they may be able to provide the boxed breakfast.
I'm gonna look into that. I'm, I'm hearing people want a something.
Yes. Something tangible, you could look at, read and...
Do you need a motion? Um, Michael?
I, I don't recall the, the Lee's concept, but that might've been early on, uh, in my, in my tenure. But I do know that, uh, many of the food service companies have boxed lunch programs that you can pull it through, so existing vendors do have, uh, and, and I've sampled some at school committee conventions, uh, so as a disclosure, uh, whether it be cinnamon twist or Captain Crunch, I, I don't, those don't fit into the boxed lunch, but I, I was impressed with, uh, the nutritional value of what was being handed out as a breakfast.
You don't need a motion on that. You just want a direction.
Direction, motion, doesn't matter which way it comes. I'm, I'm hearing everybody kinda going the same direction, so I can use that.
Um, approval of field trip for the West to grade, for the West Grade Three to Plymouth Plantation and the Mayflower.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of a donation of $328 worth of books from book lovers.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is this a store? What is this?
Nancy Fournier, book lovers?
Dr. Colley, what is this?
Honestly, I do not know.
Is it just like a term?
Mr. S- it could be a club.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
I don't know of any business on Mouse Mill.
No.
Me neither. It may be just a book club.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there business, is there a business case?
We will certainly send Mrs. Fournier a thank you letter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of a tenant's office for...
You missed.
Should, that's the officer.
Right.
Approval of a tenant's officer for Westport Community Schools, the SRO, Robert Reed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. So, uh, what are we actually approving here?
Basically, you have to designate somebody to be the person that goes and says, hey, you're not in school, get back into school, or knock on people's doors.
Are you approving the person or the position?
It's basically the position. Um, he just happens, we want to designate the SRO, otherwise you have to designate somebody within the school to go to people's houses. You could, but we're suggesting it's the SRO.
Through the, uh, SRO program.
Okay. Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, approval, uh, of obsolete surplus equipment and property disposal, Dr. Colley?
Um, you do have a policy for things that are less than $200 in value. Um, when we started trying to figure out what we could do to provide some space to the Title One math teacher at the elementary school, um, we went in to try to use one of the rooms that used to be, uh, the science, uh, lab in the elementary school that, over the last few years, had become more of a storage space. And she found that there were 75 desks, about 25 tables in different, uh, shapes of, uh, disrepair, or some of them are, you know, just little tables that we can't use. And, um, we also have the old math textbooks and teacher manuals, six Grade One teacher editions, six Grade Two teacher editions, then 130, uh, Grade Three copies for the kids, six for the teachers, um, and then the, um, about the same amount for Grade Four, um, for both teacher editions, six, and about 130 for the, uh, student editions. Since we switched to the new series, um, these basically are just in boxes and she's trying to get them out of her way so she can have more room to bring the kids in to do some remedial work in her now new space that's now half been taken up as storage. The schools don't have a lot of storage space, no matter which school you look at. And so, um, the first step in the policy that we have for obsolete materials and equipment is to declare it as obsolete, then we offer it to, um, other departments. If they can use it, we just give it to them. If they don't need it, we offer it to some of the not-for-profits. Um, and, you know, we do have to try to see if the town will have a surplus sale. I have not heard of one, although if you declare it a surplus, then I would ask the town if they're gonna have one of those sales. They would take over the, the stuff, in part because you're supposed to be able to try to make some money back on it. Um, I do know we, we did a little bit of internet research and, um, nobody's looking to buy the old editions of the textbooks. We, we did look for that. Um, the desks, um, unless they're antique, are going for like a couple of bucks and, uh, the same thing with the tables. Um, they just don't have a lot of resale value even on eBay.
Kelly?
I, I just, I know that, and again, th- these are elementary school desks, which I'm assuming are smaller than the ones at the middle school, but I remember you bringing a desk to us. I'm, I'm assuming that somebody went through this and there's been some swapping out where the...
We did.
The worst bad desks are the ones that are being gotten rid of as opposed to the, the ones that are better and more usable.
That, that's part of it. The other part is the middle school, um, some of these desks could be adjusted to the height of the middle school kids, if you will. They have adjustable legs. The problem is, the, the kind that they have stored in that room are just a desk with a little cubby underneath and the four legs. It doesn't have a chair to go with it. So when we looked at how much it would cost to buy the chairs to go with those old desks, you would spend just as much on just the chairs and you would still have an old desk versus buying the new desk-chair combination. They're just about the same price.
Eric?
So...
We just saw some pretty not-so-good MCAS scores in math. Are we able to give these away to the students who want to take them home and work with their parents a little bit more and...
Once it's declared surplus...
I have two of them at my house every week, so she can obviously use a textbook.
Absolutely. How many boxes do you want? No, really, uh, we've given some to, uh, homeschool parents who wanted additional materials for their kids. It's, it's fine.
Tony?
Dr. Colley, the, uh, the basement at the MAC Humber is...
Do you really want to talk about that now?
I mean, a lot of it, I, 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 I'm not going out on a limb and saying that's junk. I mean, to begin with, we need to get rid of that stuff and then, again, I'm not saying some of this stuff's any good, but things that maybe we consider using again, there's more than enough room in that basement to store some of this stuff. But at, but you have to get rid of the junk that's there. I mean, that, I don't know, you know, the fire department should go down there. I mean, that basement is stuffed with, you name it. That needs to get cleaned out and then, then, then we would have storage for things that maybe aren't ready to, you know, we're not ready to park with.
Michael?
Uh, I remember in past years, we had some cer- I don't know if it was the same quantities, but, uh, surplus salvage materials and, uh, at some dollar point, it, it doesn't have to go through the process, I thought it was a policy.
It's, it's $200. Um, the question is, when you have this large number, does it raise to the point of $200 altogether?
But I don't think there's a list that's, that's been yet put together, right? It's just, do, do we have an idea on how many?
That's the list I got. Seventy-five desks?
That's what I'm saying, I'm applying it. I'll explain that. Tony did it.
He's got a picture.
He's helping me.
Okay, we're not.
I've been watching Dr. Shavago on the...
Isn't that good?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, with, with some of what I get involved in, salvage value on metal seems to make sense for a lot of this stuff and if we donate it to...
Funny that you asked.
Uh, of, of, someone who's willing to move it there. One of the biggest expenses of salvage is getting it there. So if we have perhaps one of our parent-teachers groups that want to help move it, whether it be out of the basement, that, that Tony's been in the basement, he knows where that stuff is, but if we can get some help to move this, perhaps the funds received can go into that.
We can certainly offer it to a not-for-profit like the PTO to put in back of a pickup truck and drive over to Mid-City Salvage, because they're not Mid-City Steel anymore. They split the two operations.
Two hundred and something dollars a ton for steel.
Uh, this is not steel, because I did ask them, uh...
Is it aluminum? Aluminum's even better.
He said unless you could actually identify it, it would go in a scrap metal, which is 75 cents a pound.
Seventy-five a pound, that's good.
He, he can identify.
Seventy-five cents a pound.
He can identify it, but I don't know if he does.
Seventy-five dollars a ton.
I mean, if it's all one kind of chrome steel...
So, what are we doing with all of these, um, items? Do you guys want to...
The elementary school wants to get them out. And at this point, we don't have anywhere to put it. Yes, I will talk to the elementary, to the MAC principal to send the teachers down there to identify what they want to consider as surplus for the MAC.
I mean, I move that we term it as obsolete surplus equipment and let Dr. Colley go through the process of the next steps to get to the end point of wherever it's gone.
Is there discussion on terming these as obsolete and surplus equipment?
And we'll offer them to whoever needs them, obviously.
The books are all going to Eric's house.
I need a A book.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, moving on to the approval of policies, um, E, oh, I just lost it. EEE, EEA, EEA, A, EEA, B, and EEA, C are all transportation policies.
Is there a recommendation for the policy committee on this?
These have all been edited by the policy committee and were sent up here unanimously.
And they're recommending to...
Yes.
Most of them were changed.
Some of them, some of them didn't even change.
The first three did not change.
But we looked at all of them anyway.
Make the motion to accept all as a package.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto, uh, the new JFABE.
I'm getting a error message.
You want me to read it so that everybody at least has the verbiage for the policy?
Yes.
I'll just hit the donate here.
Um, this would be a new policy. We don't have this currently in the books. Um, I did not find a policy like this from MASC, but basically it goes, "Mission of Staff, Children Attending Westport Community Schools. Children of Teachers in the Westport Community School Districts who live outside the town of Westport will be allowed to attend the Westport Community Schools tuition-free as long as it does not require opening another section, the hiring of additional staff, or create a conflict with the school's choice legislation. The article will apply only to children of staff holding permanent, full-time positions in the Westport Community School System." And if I remember the discussion, um, it should be children of staff, not necessarily just teachers, but that could be a, an amendment you make right here.
Yeah, it was staff.
It was staff. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael. I was reading.
Um, when I looked at this in the packet, uh, over the weekend, I wondered the history of this. So if, if you could just back up a little bit, the conversation on how we got to this, is a request that's come forward?
Over the past few years, there have been people who have asked. Um, the, the policy subcommittee decided to take that up as a possible policy. Um, I know there's a few staff members that would welcome this policy. I'm not sure how many there would be. Um, many of them have children, obviously. They don't all live here in Westport. About half of our staff lives in town, half of it does not. Whether they would consider bringing their children here or not, um, you know, this is something that some districts do as part of their negotiated agreements. Um, my guess is other people may do it as a policy. I don't know. But I know there's a few districts in the area that, that have this kind of, uh, arrangement with their staff.
Do you want to continue?
Yeah, just to, to follow up, I, uh, I appreciate you pointing out that this is typically tied to, you know, a, a total package of, you mentioned something about it being part of a contractual agreements. Uh, I see it, that, that there's an appropriate time and, and contracts and budgets, both certainly, um, uh, thi- this has an effect on. Uh, my concern, and I recognize that it talks about as long as hiring additional staff, but i- if, if Johnny enrolls today and then tomorrow someone new moves to town, that may trigger the additional staff. So, I, there's not a lot of control in that. In other words, if we open the doors to three more students from a family that, who's, who are employed here and then we have another transfer in, well, now we have a class that's, that's overburdened. It's too large again. Um, the discussion has merit. I, I certainly think that, that the timeline, uh, is appropriate to, to look at the impact. Um, we don't have any numbers on how many students it, it may be interested. Uh, we've, we've got an idea that, that it's not hundreds, uh, probably not more than 10, I guess, but I, I am concerned with this, uh, having some costs associated with this change in policy and its effect on, uh, budget. I'm also encouraged that it, if, if it's welcomed by some employees and, and something they want, I think we should look at that going forward.
Eric?
Does out, since we neighbor out of state, does out-of-state make any diff- we're a bordering town of Little Cock and also Tiverton. Does out-of-state make any difference on...
It, not if you, either if you do it as a policy or as a, um, as a part of your, um, contract benefits, in either case, once the student becomes, um, a registered student, it wouldn't matter.
Now, since we're not school choice, because at school choice, we have to carry that kid through graduation. Is there any possibility, like what Mike said, let's say we take a child in and three other kids now make us go have another classroom, can we at some point the next year say, we don't have your spot for you this year?
You could.
Okay.
If we leave it as a policy.
That's what I'm saying, if we leave it as a policy, we can shut the door at any time.
And I, I think that needs to be very, made very clear to any staff if we choose to adopt it, that did take advantage of, you know, understand that if at any time something happens and your child is now changing the makeup of whatever, then, go ahead. Tony?
Well, I, I think when most of us heard that we didn't have this policy, we were surprised, because I think most surrounding communities do this and I, I mean, I, I thought we did it, I didn't realize that we didn't do it. And anything that encourages parents, teachers, anyone to bring their kids into the system isn't a bad thing.
And I think too, one, one thing that I like about offering an option like this to staff is that if their children are elsewhere, they have a vested interest in that school. If their children are here, they have, to me, they have more of a vested interest in the district because their children are here. Um, but that's just my personal opinion. Michael?
Uh, no, I, I was not surprised, uh, when I was attending the policy meeting and the discussion came up that, that we don't do this. I, I was well aware of that and that it was the long-term policy to, to not do it. I mean, it's been considered in the past. Um, in order for us to, uh, consider this type policy, uh, we've got to keep in mind, we're also looking at enrollment trends, uh, of our school system. Certainly in our budget, we, we know what the cost per student is currently. Certainly in our budget, we know what the cost per student is currently. The costs, there are some fixed costs that go along with educating a student that, as well as the costs that are variable. The, uh, the fact that we might not need a new teacher, we still need textbooks, we still need computers. So this is a very major budget decision and I think it needs to be examined by the entire school committee. I understand it's being put forward by a policy committee, but I'm concerned with the impacts. We're talking about over a hundred thousand dollars if ten students come into this school if we look at what our per student cost is. So to, it was not an oversight that we didn't have it, it was a decision not to have it. And worthy of discussion, yes. I couldn't vote for this tonight based on no idea on what the cost implications are.
Carolina?
We discussed it at the policy committee. I was one of the people who was surprised to hear that we didn't have this policy. I think it, the benefits attached to having this policy is we potentially can recruit people that would come and teach in our system because they can bring their kids into our system, they become more vested in our system, it becomes more of a community for some of the staff that may not live in town, but will now have their children in the town. And I personally think it's good policy to give a benefit to your employees that eventually and ultimately benefits the district as a whole. So I would move to approve this policy.
Is there a?
Second.
Discussion on Carolina's motion to approve policy J-F-A-B-E?
I normally would have said yes to this off, because I was in that meeting that this all came out of, and I was all for to say yes at that time. But just hearing ten students, do we have any idea of how many that were actually? I know we have one person in particular, but is there a thing of how many people in this district are going to take, have you talked, how many people are going to take advantage of this do you know of?
I have not had a chance to canvass this staff. I do know of at least one other person who may do that because they're right now paying to bring their child to the preschool where we allow people to tuition in as a, as an added district student, if there's room, if they pay the fee, that kind of thing. In terms of the cost, when we take a look at our per pupil costs, that's an average aggregate cost among many cost factors, including the cost of the teacher, the cost of the books, the cost of the materials, the cost of the lights. It excludes certain things like technology. We know that it costs even a little bit more than what our per pupil average tends to be. That being said, this is kind of the same argument with school choice where the state was not giving anybody the full amount of their per pupil cost for one student to join a class. Granted, in school choice, there are some very interesting regulations that limit, you know, your powers and extend your responsibilities way into the future, where if you have a class, say it happens to be, you know how we have some classes that have large numbers of kids in a grade level? And, you know, like first grade, we chose to put seven teachers in there. But we have other classes that are very small, so you may have class sizes varying from the high twenties to the low twenties. If these children, for example, happen to go into one particular class that's at that low level, your cost would be, you know, some time, materials, supplies, but in general, you would not be adding additional staff anyway. The question is, as Mike pointed out, if you do have one of those classes that's kind of like borderline, where you have twenty-five, twenty-six kids in a class and we start talking about, maybe we need to add a teacher to that grade level to bring it down to the low twenties, then you would have an argument, do we apply then if this policy was in place, to say to this parent, "Hey, maybe next year you can't bring your kid back because we're going to have to add more staff just to bring the number down. You're not from the town, the town has a responsibility to educate the kids from here first. It's going to be a burden on the school system." That's a conversation you would have at that time. So there is, you know, could it cost you a hundred thousand? I don't know.
Is there any case law on it, by any chance, Carolina?
No, this is usually either a policy, a practice, or a contract.
Right.
There are schools that make it a practice, it's not an official policy, they take each case on a case-by-case basis. Our policy actually did not allow this because of the way it was worded.
Right.
And the policy committee met and we discussed it and as I stated before I made my motion, I think this is a good thing to do and that's why I moved to have it approved.
Just, so Michael?
Yeah.
Mike?
There is a policy in place.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, if, is there any students enrolled in the school or have there been in the past four years that have paid tuition to the school, not under school choice, as employees of staff?
Only in preschool that I know.
So there is a policy in place. We're now reversing that policy. We have set a policy, there's a tuition that they pay to come in in the past. I was pretty sure there was a high school or two, I don't know what they paid. Does it have to be revisited? Yes, absolutely. I'm in favor of the intent of, and visiting it. But to add a benefit to a group of employees that's represented by a union with a stroke of a pen this evening is, and having it cost us money. I just think it's premature to enact this policy this evening.
Would you like?
Huge cost.
Um, you, you could, and I'm just throwing something on the table, you could include within the policy a tuition figure. I mean, I would not put in the same amount that you would put in as a full per pupil cost because of the considerations that I mentioned. But you could extend the tuition structures up into other grade levels for just staff, children, if you wanted to, to offset whatever cost there may be for supplies, materials, books, those kind of things.
Has any of the union reps been at least notified, like did they? Do the unions have any idea what, because he is right, we are giving up a big bargaining tool.
No, we have not talked to them about this.
Michael?
And then, and I didn't want to bring this up this evening, but it appears that the financial impact is being minimized. If we had a student who was already enrolled and a catastrophic incident, or perhaps they were identified as having special needs after they were enrolled, regardless of if we put in this policy that we're going to exempt special ed, I don't believe it's legal.
You can't do that.
And it is adding to the cost. Now, I'm not in a position this evening because I don't know what those costs are. As I've said, it's worthy of further consideration.
The policy subcommittee did, we did discuss costs, we did discuss potentials, we did discuss what-ifs. Only speaking for myself, I think it would almost be impossible, even if we had a number right now, that number could potentially change on a yearly basis depending on what new staff we get, what staff we lose, who their children are. So, Eric?
Let's jump back a few months. We had a discussion on school choice and it's always been that little dangling hanging out, what if we get someone in this district? What if? And we've always said no to school choice, which would have brought revenue into our district when we were laying off teachers and doing everything else. We said no to school choice. We're now giving school choice a backdoor. Do we have that one, that what if someone comes into this district and, I'd hate to say, but let's say they do have a catastrophic accident, car accident, we own this student.
Can you, what do you mean by giving school choice a backdoor?
We're now allowing, we didn't allow school choice because we didn't want that what-if. And he's always said, "We don't have any students that have ever taken advantage of the special ed," but there's always that what-if, what-if. We're now forgetting about the what-if because it's a benefit we're going to offer to the teachers and we're saying, "Oh, the what-ifs don't make a difference now." But yeah, we were going to make money off of it and have it as a, because we did generate money, even on tonight's totals, I think we still had eighteen thousand dollars in the revolving fund for school choice. We took a revenue source off the table because of what-if, and now we're throwing that what-if back on the table with no monetary value to it.
I understand. I agree with you on the school choice, but I think this is very different in my eyes than school choice. School choice is allowing a complete outsider, a complete stranger, somebody who has no affiliation with the school to come here for whatever reason they wish to. Whereas for me, the thing for me is, these are our, this is our staff. So, yeah, in essence, am I saying, "Here's an olive branch"? A little bit, just because that's how I feel personally, and I understand if you differ, that's fine.
I don't know how I feel, I just, I'm right in the middle here.
To me, this is, to me, this is more of an olive branch. I think this has been a difficult time for our teachers, it has been a difficult time for the staff in general. And as minimal as it, and I'm not meaning to minimize any cost because the cost could vary from your tier, but I think adding some limitations and saying, "Look, we're not adding staff for you, we're not adding a classroom, we're not adding this." If we have a program that is currently existing, then to me, it's no more than giving them another book, giving them some more homework paper. To me, we're not adding to the cost significantly because we're already opening that classroom, we're already educating that classroom with a teacher, we're already providing the materials for that particular class. So I don't see it as a hundred thousand dollar cost personally. But that's just my take on this. I'm seeing this as more of a, look, we appreciate you guys. We're giving the staff an olive branch to say, "We want your children here, we want you involved, we want you to stay here. We keep losing staff. We lose staff at the high school, we lose staff at the middle school, we're losing staff constantly because they don't think we care." This is, so this is just for me, this is just something to say, "We do care, we're sorry we can't give you more money." I, I mean, every time I hear the dollar amount, I almost fall off my chair. I heard it today from Alec, thirty thousand dollars is going to get me a teacher with a master's degree. Are you kidding me?
He's also adding the ten thousand.
He's adding ten thousand.
All right, so forty thousand dollars. Still, are you kidding me? So we're, I mean, we're giving these teachers so little. To me, this is something that we can at least say to them, "Look, we're trying," and, but, I mean, that's just. Michelle?
Again, there is a cost associated with this. I estimated off the top of my head as I'm looking at it, knowing what our average student cost is. I know that, as I had said, there would be some costs that affect, therefore they don't fit into it. You've said that the policy committee looked at the numbers. No, I was at that meeting as an attendee.
No, you weren't. You weren't at that meeting. We had a meeting last Wednesday, right here at three o'clock, three-thirty, whatever.
You're speaking as an executive.
Oh, okay. I was at a meeting when the concept was discussed. I thought that was the one that you were referring to.
No, 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 it was not.
Um, you know, the school committee's looking at a policy that's going to cost us a lot of money. We don't know how much money, okay? If there's an addendum that goes with this that can show us what you're speaking to and the fact of there is a cost associated with it. I was not aware that we had so many unhappy people in the system, as was just discussed. I, this does not address the long list of unhappy people. It addresses three or four, I would imagine.
Absolutely.
At a cost. And we don't have the money to spend without knowing what that cost is. That's my concern.
Carolina?
I just want to make it clear that my motion is to adopt this policy, but it should read children of staff, not children of teachers. I just wanted to make that clear.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, to me, this is more of a quality of life issue. It's, I mean, just like we can't put a prohibition on building new homes in Westport, I mean, what are we going to do? discourage people from moving into town because it's going to cost us more money? I mean, come on, that's, it's a no-brainer.
All right.
Let's vote.
All those in favor of adopting policy? Sorry.
I tried to add it into the list.
J-F-A-B-E. All those in favor of adopting, Caroline's motion to, approving Caroline's motion to adopt policy J-F-A-B-E? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? No.
Abstaining.
Yeah. Approval of the minutes of Tuesday, August seventh, two thousand and twelve.
Oh, that's what you talked about, that organizational chart. Oh, the organizational chart.
You just said the same thing you said.
What'd I say?
He said exactly what you said.
Yeah, how's that chart coming along, by the way?
Is there a motion? I wasn't here, so.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Close it.
No.
Oh, you know what, I keep using this.
Do the arrow back.
Yeah, I keep using, this moves the arrow, but it doesn't click.
Eric made the motion and Tony seconded?
Yep.
Minutes of September twelfth.
Is, any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm abstaining. Eric, are you?
On what, the next one?
No, the first ones.
Oh, I'm sorry, I made the motion, so I thought it was given.
Michael? You still reading?
I had left during part of it, so I just don't know. I'll abstain so as not to complicate it.
Motion to approve the minutes from September twelfth, two thousand and twelve.
Are we all abstaining? There's so many arrivals and leadings and tell me.
I know, but I was here the whole time, so was Tony.
And I started at the CIPC.
You had the first one?
The first one was five, no.
I see, no.
No, two abstentions.
Eight, seven?
The eight, seven.
Yes, the first one is three, seven. Did you get that one?
In favor?
No, I abstained.
All right, sorry.
Or two? Three? Abstained, abstained.
I abstained. Michael abstained.
Who was here?
So three?
It was three with two abstentions.
Right.
Our motion to approve September twelfth minutes?
Eleven oh six.
Second?
Second.
Discussion on these minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondence, I have the meeting for, that's over.
Can our citizen talk?
We're not there yet. Um, checking morning. You should have talked in the beginning.
Now she does.
You can raise your hand during the meeting then.
Um, and also I have a request of freedom, where do you go?
Just check on.
I have a request of Freedom of Information Act request, again, from, um, Westport Taxpayer Association. Association.
What are they asking?
Uh, they're requesting copies of all documents pertaining to or memorializing the vote by the Westport School Committee to approve the latest contract for superintendent of schools, including and not limited to the minutes of any Westport School Committee meetings of which said contract was discussed in open session. That goes with it? Here. Um, and there's also on your computer, the mass, mask, mask, mask joint conference, resort and conference center in Hyannis, November seventh through ten. Uh, when does this need to be?
Two go last year.
One day.
I'm denying everything.
When does this have to, we don't know when this has to be registered by?
We get this in the other houses yesterday, I think.
It did come.
I couldn't get on my computer this day, actually.
I thought it was only a one-day thing for the executive board, but...
No. Um, any new business requests?
Uh, it's not really new. I guess it is new business. Last meeting, we talked about watching the tapes of what we agreed to on elementary school and Mackhammer School getting picked up, door-to-door stop. Was it ever done?
I'll ask.
Remember, we had a confusion on whether we...
I do remember.
If everyone's gonna have a joint, whether it was just high school or middle school, we're gonna have the communal bus stops and K and elementary would have door-to-door pickup.
Which, which me, that wasn't the one that was...
I don't remember which meeting it was. We were supposed to look back at the tape and see what, because I, we had a...
I remember that coming up, but that meeting that was in the auditorium was not...
The budget subcommittee meeting? That was Tony and Michael? That was not taped?
That was not taped.
The long, that one wasn't?
Nope.
I'm paused. I don't, I don't do subcommittee meetings.
But it started out as a school committee meeting.
But it was a budget thing. I think you might, I think that was taped. That was a really big, long meeting about where we're gonna make cuts. And the auditorium was packed.
When was this?
It was the first, well, there was two. We had two in the auditorium.
The meeting that broke off, it started...
The first one was taped.
That was taped, but that was not the, that's not the meeting that you're talking about.
The school committee meeting was taped, but we didn't have that discussion at the school committee meeting. That just...
No, there was some discussion that happened in between. But did we ever check the tapes on what was said regarding elementary school pickup? Because Eric is remembering it being said that the bus transportation changes would not affect six and down.
No, not six and down. Elementary school and Mackhammer.
Oh, okay. Correct.
I did not, I don't remember that being asked, but I can have Karen.
It was, we discussed it.
I remember her and I have the same recollection of what was said. And I actually told a parent that, although, don't worry, nothing's changed with the K and elementary school kids.
Can we double back, double back on those tapes?
I will, I will have Karen do that. Hopefully, she'll be good enough to sit there and watch.
That would've been talked about?
I barely remember the beginning of the meeting.
August seventh? No. This was, I think, the one you're referring to is June twenty-seventh, where we had school committee, then we broke up. We had the, uh...
Right, that's the meeting.
The subcommittee.
It was the very next day after the vote.
And then we had, we went back.
And that was the tape, because it was a school committee meeting, so it would've been taped.
Yeah, it was the day after the vote.
Honestly, I don't remember.
It was the twentieth.
Um, alright, so can we check on that?
That's the meeting I got medevac, because I had all those times in my bag.
We'll look at, we'll look at the school committee meeting, this, from back then.
Okay.
Anything else?
And the notes. The, uh, the evaluation, what are we gonna do about that? We do anything against that goal?
Well, that doesn't start an open session. That starts with the process of getting the papers to you guys.
You can start it in the opening.
No, I'm talking about...
Yes, the, the current, the ones we used.
Last year's evaluation process.
The ones that we did use. Yeah, I know.
The last year's.
Yes.
Twelves.
And I, I think it's, I think it's everybody's preference.
Well, maybe, uh, we need to look at the policy on that.
I think it's everybody's preference to do them before this time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, let's try to get it done before, like, the end of September or something.
Yeah. I, I have a, a point, and I'm just, I have a question. The special town meeting is gonna happen, October ninth is the deadline for presenting whatever articles that may be put forward to go in front of the finance committee. We don't meet till the tenth. Have we decided we're not gonna have any articles? Because what I've seen doesn't include the school in any way, shape, form, or manner. And if we haven't decided that, then I think we need a meeting next week.
Yeah, like, this is a thank you.
Well, I, if I could through the chair, I, I also am concerned, there's a line item that, that I think we, we should've budgeted for, that's not in our budget. That's not on tonight's agenda, but I think this would be appropriate. If we have a meeting, then we can discuss it. Because currently, there is, uh, a request out for, for any information from any departments in town on, on their status of their budgets.
Okay. So, we're looking to meet by the, the ninth. Our next meeting is scheduled for the tenth. I, I know that.
And my question is, do we call a meeting prior to it? We're going to discuss whether or not we're gonna put any articles on the special town meeting warrant.
Is that, is that everybody's preference to do that?
I will not be here, just next week.
You'll have to do all your work before you leave.
As long as they don't go to eleven o'clock at night.
No, because it would just be that. Is there a day that works? Michael?
My comment to, to the question was that it shouldn't be just that.
That's fine. You want it to also be...
The backlog of agenda requests that I put forward, and I'll be happy to recap those. I have a couple in particular that I wanna bring to your attention again.
Can you email them and prioritize?
They're in the minutes that we just approved.
I wasn't here that day.
Okay, so I'm referencing into the minutes that we just approved.
Okay, so those are the ones you're talking about. Okay.
I, I...
You got it. But I...
You weren't here that day, but you did put the agenda together with the superintendent.
For...
For tonight.
For tonight, I did. That's correct.
So, I, I have some new items for business as well.
Go ahead.
Uh, I had asked that we meet with the athletic director, so if we can schedule that. Um, I'd also like to consider his attendance to training. There's a Somerset Training Program coming up in the next forty-five days, so we can put that on the agenda to...
Training program?
Athletic directors, put up by M I A A. I would ask him to look into Rule forty-one and forty, forty-one, which is part of the workshop going over the rules and regulations of M I A A. I was hoping to discuss that with him this evening. I thought it was gonna be on the agenda. Second point is, there's certain certification accreditations that, uh, we have a process for, uh, that are required, that we have a process for archiving. I had made mention on our last meeting, that there's certain accreditation certifications that, that we as a school committee, uh, have an opportunity to request in the past. I have requested some, and I'd like to bring that up at, at a, the next meeting as well. Those items were on, uh, the last, uh, meeting.
Um, we did have, I know that you've requested several things, and there were some things in the, uh, list. Um, we looked at the agenda, and it was kinda long. I mean, we've been here a while. Um, so some of those agenda items, I had already suggested that we put on the tenth, including the A D. Actually, both A Ds, we have two new ones. Um, so that's on, I already started the, uh, the draft agenda for, um, Michelle to look at, based on the tenth. Now, if I remember, you made a comment about, on the tenth, just doing evaluation-type stuff. I mean, if you're gonna have another meeting, you may spread some of those items across agendas. The other, the other agenda item that, just talking about new business, um, is talking about the middle school and trying to put some things together around the middle school. I have, um, done some preliminary work with that, um, but we, we need to come to some agreements around the middle school.
Correct.
So, I already had a lot, a lot of things for the tenth.
I would like to start limiting our agendas to less than four hours. I mean, we get one person who's been sitting here for four hours tonight, who's still waiting to speak. Uh, we don't get good participation because we go till, our last meeting was till eleven oh six. We gotta...
Much of that was in executive session now.
This is a school committee meeting. We, we need to take it as a school committee. It's not a, a district-wide, let's get all the information out to the public through our meetings. We need to have our business to tend to. And so, where, two hours should be tops of a meeting. I mean, we used to always do it an hour and a half. That was, and now we're just, like, piling on, so much stuff into our meetings that are informational, that can just be done on internet and other places, that these four-hour meetings are just way too long.
So, information about MCAS data and scores and...
That's fine, 'cause that's, that's something that we need as a school committee. But there's, there's a lot of things that we do that aren't...
Honestly, out of curiosity, and, and I am only, um, for informational, for my informational purposes, look at the agenda tonight and tell me what is fluff. Honest, and from an honest perspective, I, I want, I wanna know what you think is fluff.
Well, I, I think that Eric wants to put that on another agenda, as I would...
Well, no, we, we have to talk about, I mean, this, when we, when we have stuff like this, this is fine. And this is, but we've had other meetings in the past where we've sat here, and honestly, we've, we've been death by PowerPoint.
Oh, I agree with you. And, and actually...
We've had death by PowerPoint.
I have, I have actually suggested, I've told him, please tell the administrators to keep it under ten minutes. I've had that discussion with you. And as a matter of fact, I timed them last time. And I went back and I said, this particular one was too long. This one was good. This one, so, he and I have actually had that discussion.
Okay.
Because I've said, you're killing us up here with some of these presentations because they are just way too long, and they're just not even keeping our attention, never mind everybody else's. So, we have actually had that discussion already.
Thank you.
Um, so, believe me, if it's, if it's death for you by PowerPoint, it's all, all by all of us. So, I'm, I'm in agreement. I mean, I'm trying to accommodate all of people's requests and also keep things at a, a fair timetable. And in addition, I, I mean, I don't think, we meet every two weeks. We're running a fifteen million dollar budget. We should meet at least a couple of hours every two weeks. I mean, if you break it down, it's an hour a week. If you broke it, to me, that's not a lot of time to talk about a fifteen million dollar budget.
If, if I may, just because I did not understand the request for new business, Mike, what do you mean about certifications or licenses or, what are you talking about?
Certification and/or accreditation, if, if, uh, if we have certification or accreditation requirements.
For...
For various positions. And...
Okay. You mean administrators? You mean teachers?
Well, being the school committee, it would be direct reports to the school committee, so that would be the superintendent. There are requirements in your contract for certification and accreditations. We have a right to ask for them. We've asked for them, and we've been told they're all set. You don't have to see them. So, I thought we had to put it on the table, because I've asked to see them, and I've been told it's all set.
Eric, can I have that letter back?
I read the policy. It says the school committee has the right to ask for it.
If I had understood that before, I would've just sent it to you. I will do that.
Okay. Um, comments and statements?
There you go. You have ten minutes.
No.
Hi, Melissa Pacico. Um, the first one was about the C F C, how you guys are talking about the after-school activities. I just wanted to add a few things. The C F C, from my understanding, is full, the after-care program. Um, the af, the P, I think it's the P A C, the PAC also does, or the P T O does an after-school program too, which is almost always full. They usually have one or two selections. And, you know, I would send my daughter to multiple ones, because they tend to be, um, specific in different areas, like sports or other activities. Um, and then, so I just encourage that. I think that parents would want that, because there seems to be a high, um, need for that, or want at least. And then I wonder if it's a possibility to get any type of STEM funding to fund any of these before or after-school programs, if we, if we focus them on either maths, you know, STEM areas, especially if that seems to be an area that is some issues in some of our schools. If we were able to do that, we'd be able to kinda do two things at once. And then we talked about the breakfast. Um, Michelle has mentioned about the nutrition and the fruit not being eaten. Is there a way that we can somehow incorporate nutrition if we do do a breakfast program with that? So, I would, if our box lunches, I'd stay away from those, uh, apple jacks and add some fruit.
No, no, they, 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 we're not...
I don't just, so, um, and then, um, so that was the first one.
Captain Crunch.
No, they were fresh baked, though.
Yeah, Captain Crunch, I would say. Um, the old books and the desks, I think the idea about the parents, I was thinking in my mind, who I'd like an old book, um, to help during the summertime. And then desks, there are some nonprofits, like, um, some of our schools that could potentially use desks. I, I can think of one that, um, I'll let you know after. Um, and then, um, in regards to that, the transportation policy, the E E A A, um, that one says that, um, students will be entitled to transportation to and from school at the expense of public schools when such transportation conforms to applicable, um, provisions. But it's not at the cost of the schools, because the students pay. So, shouldn't there be something in there that says that there'll be some sort of fee assigned to the students? No. Because it's saying, when I read that, it tells me that, that the, at the expense of the public schools. Um, however, I mean, I just think we would say something like, however, a fee will be associated for grades seven through twelve.
Can I just, it...
References to the law.
Conforms to applicable provisions of mass general laws. In other words, we can only charge if the law lets us charge. So, if the law doesn't let us charge, then we can't charge. So, you have to look at the mass general laws.
Students are entitled to transportation to and from school at the expense of the public schools, when such transportation con... Right, but it's still saying at the expense of the public schools.
When such transportation conforms with mass general law. So, you have to look at the laws that will determine when we are required to provide transportation at our expense versus when we are allowed to charge, which is seven to twelve.
Okay. Um, that, this language did come directly from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. If you look, it says source. Yeah. Okay. I just, I didn't, oh, sorry. That's our, oh, it's okay. That is their language. Okay.
Um, and it has to reference back to the general law first, and then your local policy.
Okay. I guess I just didn't see anywhere in it where we're, I'm not debating whether we should charge it. I'm just saying, I didn't see it in there, so I wasn't sure if we needed to include it.
That's basically where the provision would be, under the rules of the mass general law, which is allowing, it's only requiring us to provide transportation from K through six.
Okay. And then the final one is in regards to the, the next policy that talks about teachers and allowing, um, their students, uh, their children to go to schools. Um, my thing, what I would be thinking is, I think it's great that their student, that their children come here. Why, why don't they move into the town too as citizens? And the reason that I say that is, if we have a first-grade class that, that has twenty-one or twenty-three kids, and then we have our teachers who are not town residents, and then they start to increase the level of students. Now, if it's just one or two, then that's not really an issue. But when we start to add a cost, which it is a cost, and I'm not saying that it shouldn't be considered, but I think, you know, I am, I'm a town resident, and I pay taxes, and I know not all of my taxes go to the schools, but I do pay taxes. And I live in Westport because I want my daughter to go to Westport. So, that's just my two cents about it. I would think that, yes, I want our teachers to have their kids come here, and I want them to come and live in Westport, to be part of our community too. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for sitting.
(cough)
Thank you for coming.
Every week.
Okay. Um, motion to adjourn. We need to...
We do have a, we do have a, it didn't make it into this agenda, 'cause it was added later. We do have a scheduled, posted executive meeting to discuss teacher negotiations around supervisor evaluation.
Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes to discuss teacher negotiations?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye, Caroline Africano.
I'm Michelle Duarte.
Aye, Tony Piveras.
Aye, Michael Sullivan.
Aye, Eric Larabee. Can I abstain from that? If I can't make it to the meeting? Do I abstain from that?
No, because you're still adjourned. Do we, is, there was a paperclip that went around with this?
There was a paperclip.
Here, take this one.
No, I have.
Yeah, I got a good one for you.
I stole it.
Nevermind.
Alright, you can keep that.
Can I abstain from that, if I can't make it to the meeting? Do I abstain?
No, because you're still adjourned. Do we, is, there was a paperclip that went around with this?
There's a paperclip.
Here, take this one.
No, I have.
Yeah, I got a good one for you.
I stole it.
Are we gonna take these home now?
Yeah. I'd love to know who wants.
Hey, I, I did pretty good.
You are, I'm impressed.
Because I got a headache now from looking at the screen.
They're all elementary size, or they have?
Oh, we're not plugged into power, huh?
Screws and.
That's why I was dark.